Five long years I took your stuff. Pack your bags, I had enough. Of your evil-hearted ways. Only thing numbered are your days. You make me want to walk on. Baby, walk on. Got to, got to walk on. Baby, walk on. Got to, got to walk on. Baby, walk on. Got to, got to walk on. Baby, walk on. Got to, got to walk on. Baby, walk on. Got to, got to walk on. Baby, walk on. Here I go. Back in love again. Here I go. Back in love with you. Here I go. Back in love again. Here I go. Back in love with you. Whoa, baby. It's cold outdoors. Whoa, baby. Let me come inside. Whoa, baby. I love you so. Whoa, baby. Here I go again. You said you love me. Honey, I love you. You said you need me. Baby, I need you. But when you ask me why I treat you that way, that's all I need. All I need to know. 'Cause here I go. Back in love again. Here I go. Back in love with you. Oh, baby. It's cold outdoors. Whoa, baby. Let me come inside. Whoa, baby. I love you so. Oh, baby. Yeah, I go again. Go again. Back in love. Mark and Sheen.
Um, I think I can do it. Why don't you? Yes. David Quante, this is Councilmember George Artest.
Are you all where you can see? Okay. We are beginning the council meeting with the swearing-in of two new counts. We are beginning with the swearing-in of two new police officers. We are absolutely delighted to have them. The chief will talk a little bit, I guess, at some point about their qualifications. And both of them are recent graduates of the academy. And remind me again what the other things are.
Oh, the two awards?
Yes.
Officer Quante received the firearms award as well as the defensive tactics award.
And we're delighted to have both of them here in our police department. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the oath of office and ask you to repeat after me. If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do affirm under penalties of perjury that I will faithfully perform those duties assigned to me as a police officer for the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland. That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Maryland. That I will obey the commands of my superiors and abide by all the rules policies and procedures of the police department. That without prejudice or partiality I will perform my duties and enforce all laws within the city of Tacoma Park and as I may otherwise have jurisdiction. And that I hereby acknowledge and accept this appointment as a public trust requiring honesty and diligence. Well, congratulations to both of you. Thank you very much. The police chief is going to pin the badges on our new officers. I understand that this is a photo op and that you'll want to take some pictures, right? You want to take pictures of our new officers with all the council members? We are going to sign the oaths of office, the police chief, myself, and our new Tacoma Park officers.
Check one, two.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
All right. Is there any council comments or announcements? Joy?
I have a couple of things that I want to bring to my colleagues' attention. The first is an interest in the speed camera demonstration project. As you know, the state recently passed legislation that allows jurisdictions to put in speed cameras, especially, I believe they have to be a certain distance from the school, and the cost of the ticket is capped. But I would like to start a process where we would get requests for proposals of companies that do this kind of work and see what their business plan would be and start considering the prospects for that. I know one company where a resident lives in our community is interested in this as a demonstration project. And it looks like a very easy financial decision for the city to undertake with them because there would be very little cost to us. Instead of only entertaining one offer, I think we really need to start a public process of having this be explored by the city council and hopefully endorsed and then having the city manager lead it through the request for proposals process.
I would suggest that we begin, that process if the council wishes to begin, by consulting with the county, which is going through a very similar process. There are a lot of issues on speed cameras that have to be considered. And rather than our going through this independently, I think going through it with the county would be helpful. They also have a lot of information already. And there is some concern, and I think they are justified in that concern, that if this isn't done well, that opponents in the state legislature of the speed cameras might use that as a way to try and repeal the authorization for speed cameras in a future legislative session. So I think that there are some legitimate concerns. I don't disagree with moving forward, but I think we need to keep those things in mind. And my suggestion would be that before we begin independently speaking with vendors, that we sit down and work with the county and some of the things that they're doing and some of the guidelines and proposals that they're working on. The other thing, the other reason I think we should talk to the county is that to the extent that there is going to be a cost to this, we might be able to get them to bear the cost if we work with them on it, so.
If I can just add to that, that I know that someone in our police department was at a meeting with his counterparts in the county and various other municipal agencies last week about this, and there's begun to be some coordination and discussion.
That's good. That's very good. So is this something that you can schedule for a work session as soon as possible?
I think the first thing I would like to schedule is a discussion with the county about some of the things that they're doing.
Is that something that the city manager could investigate and bring to the council?
I'd be happy to do so. I think that Chief Kramer may have had some discussions with the county already. But certainly what I can do is follow up on your request. Councilmember Austin Lane will report back to the council.
Thank you. The other issue that is a loose end from the Metro planning session, which took place on March 4th, is the matter of postage and printing for postcards. The city manager coordinated a lot of data entry of addresses of people who have signed petitions in the recent past on the development proposal at the Metro. We wanted to make sure that they got word of the planning session. It happened again that Metro wasn't completely on top of getting the word out. And those postcards did go out. I believe that the council discussed this, but the postage and printing had already been procured and the postcard sent at that time. So I would appreciate the council's approval of reimbursing that resident who undertook that cost and put together a team of people, including historic Tacoma folks, and got the mailing out. The planning session was very well attended, both by Maryland and DC residents. And I felt that it was a constructive process. And I felt it was unfortunate that it took place six years after it did. Could I get people's approval for the reimbursement?
My understanding when we discussed that, I think on February 21st, was that there had been a request for it, that we were asked for discussion and approval. And we heard that there were over 1,000 names on the list, and 17, I think, were city residents. And the decision at that point was not to do it. I still feel like that was the right decision. My understanding at the time was that the expense was going to be pending any discussion that we had. So I'm surprised to hear that the expense had already happened before we even discussed it.
Is there any other council comments on that?
Given that I was out of town at the meeting where this was brought forward, I would appreciate the council's reconsideration of this issue. Is there more information that I can provide to facilitate that? It did amount to $500. And this was a resident who took it upon themselves to undertake that cost. And many people put their labor into it.
I guess I have a question. The resident who undertook the cost, why did they think the city would pay for it?
Pretty much they were reading our resolution, which said we would allocate sufficient resources, both time and money, to putting forward the city council's position on the Metro development. And that's what was done. I believe the miscommunication that took place was that the resident, the group of residents, expected the city to provide city residents' addresses as well. And they would have undertaken that additional postage and printing expense.
What?
What we were told was there was no one on staff who could do this in the short turnaround time that was available.
No, but I understand there's a lot of staff time expended on putting a lot of people from a petition, taking the names off a petition and entering it into the city's database. At the conclusion of that process, it was discovered that almost nobody from the petition was from Tacoma Park, the city of Tacoma Park. And after some great expense had been, some great amount of staff time, which is in fact an expense, had been expended in doing this. And I am completely committed to the notion of the city doing everything we can to try and make the development of the Tacoma Metro transit friendly to our residents. But I guess I would have to agree with Bruce. This sort of came at us in the 11th hour. It's unclear why the people who did this thought that the city would pay for a communication to DC residents. And in the absence of new information, I guess I would go along with the decision the council made previously.
The list that was entered was not one that I had even seen. It was one that we had petitions submitted to us, and we were asked to see if staff time could be allocated to enter those into a database. And then at that time, the residents did recognize it was important to get the word out. And they did so. On reinspection, the fact that there were 20 city residents' addresses included in that, when there certainly could have been more, was an oversight. But this group worked very hard in getting the word out, both by email and mail and phone calls. So I think that them bearing the expense of $500 in printing and postage that I would hope would fall under the resolution we, as a council, passed, that we wouldn't let it remain that way.
I'm not hearing any member of the council who wishes to change the council's previous decision. And in the absence of that, I'm assuming the previous decision's staying.
In the future, I would appreciate if the council member who's most closely involved was present when the council discussed the matter.
That, I had to, it came up at a time. The city, my understanding is the city manager did not become aware of this issue until right before the Metro meeting was happening. You were out of town that week. The only available way to do this would have been for her to bring it up to the council that week.
Actually, the city manager has been aware of the list of people since late last year. The database, the data entry was supposed to have begun then. And unfortunately, it did not get completed by city staff until the 11th hour. And at that time, residents took it upon themselves to complete the job.
I don't know what else to say. I don't see the sentiment on the council to change the council's previous decision. Is there anything else, any other council members? I wanted to, I think Councilmember Barry may have a report he wishes to make about the opening of a new business in his ward.
Thank you for reminding me, Mayor. I would like to report that a new business opened in the Ward 6 area on Holton Lane. This is Easy Storage, which is a very large and attractive building that the council has been involved in tracking and developing. What we were particularly impressed by, not only was the landscaping of the building, which is quite attractive, but the four retail spaces, about 1,000 square feet each, which are available to anyone that might have an interest in setting up a business on that part of town. And we'd certainly encourage them to do that. The mayor gave out a certificate of appreciation to the business, and they seemed quite happy with that. And I made some remarks about the importance of attracting new retail to that part of town in particular and along the New Hampshire corridor from University Avenue to the District Line. I'd also like to report that after bird-dogging for many months, the SHA finally electrified the two pedestrian safety lights on University Avenue. And the two on New Hampshire should be also powered up within the next several days. The lighting fixtures have been there for many months. The lights were dark, certainly affording no extra protection to that area, which is a high concentration of pedestrians and has in the past, unfortunately, been the site of a number of fatalities of pedestrians. And the lights were installed there some months ago to help prevent further accidents of that kind. And finally, the lights are on, and the area, I think, is a little safer as a result.
Is there anything else, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind my colleagues and alert the public that I've been trying to share more information of what's been going on with the council governments. And one thing of particular interest that they have just started doing is jurisdiction-by-jurisdiction focus on economic and demographic characteristics and printing up nice reports that are also available on the COG website, which is mw cog.org. The one that I distributed this week is on Montgomery County. They're going to be doing every member jurisdiction of COG, and a lot of good information in it. And I've also been including, they're now starting to provide monthly updates on federal and state legislative issues that are of particular interest to member governments. So I'll be trying to make sure that you get packets of information every month with all that and more. And anybody who wants to see any of the information, COG has a good website.
I just wanted to report that on Saturday, most of the day Saturday, Suzanne and Ludlow and I were up in Annapolis in front of the state legislature at what's referred to as the annual beg-a-thon, which is all the nonprofits and jurisdictions who are looking for money from the legislature go up. And you wait for hours and hours and hours. Fortunately, it used to be in a very hot hallway with no place to sit. Now it's in a decently air-conditioned room with chairs. You wait for hours for your two minutes where you get to talk really fast and explain all the advantages of your project. And the city, the city actually has, as people know, a request for funding for the gym. Also, there were a number of other entities that are associated with the city that have requests in there, including Historic Tacoma is requesting funding for a new home for the organization. The Thunderbolts is requesting money for updates to the baseball field at Blair. And CASA has requested through the Prince George's delegation funding for their multi-services center. So there were many, probably if you counted up all the entities that have affiliations with Tacoma Park, we probably are the, are way disproportionately looking for funding from the legislature. I also did hear very informally from our delegate, Peter Francho, who was there supporting our request on the House side, that he believes we will receive half a million dollars of our request of 1 million for the gym. So I think that's very good news. All right. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of minutes. Before we vote on that, I'd like to just very briefly, I see that we're changing the format of the minutes a little bit. I noticed that the new format is slightly different than the old format. And I know that whenever that happens, there's a little bit of changeover that has to do. And I know Jesse's very much on top of this. There were a couple of things that I noticed in the new format. One being that the minutes do seem to be, I mean, the minutes from closed sessions do seem to be showing up again twice. And the other thing is that the formats of the old format minutes and the new format minutes for closed sessions are different. And I'm wondering if that's just sort of a changeover issue or whether...
I think it could be a combination of things. If you like, I can take a look at that. I thought all the information was included that needed to be in there, but they do look a little different. And it's because we're trying to work with the new software and it's a bit of a challenge. So if you're seeing things that look wrong, I can certainly make adjustments.
Okay. The only other thing that I would say is, and I think this is, this looks like a software issue, is that some of, you're obviously pulling off the announcements of the agenda, the topics, because sometimes they're phrased in the future tense and obviously they're past tense in the minutes. And that's the only other thing that I would mention. But in terms of substance, I don't think that there's, that there's a... But in terms of substance, I don't think that there's, that there's a problem. So unless the council feels any concern about the city clerk taking a look at the format of some of these things and maybe massaging it a bit so that it's, if she feels that there's a need to do so. Unless there's a discomfort level in the council, I would recommend that we just go ahead and approve them for substance.
They'll move the minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any concern? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are adopted. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is the time set aside on the agenda for comments on items that are not on our regular meeting agenda. If you have comments on any of the items, including the public hearing or any of the items on the regular meeting agenda, please save your comments so we get to that item. This would be the time for comments on any items on our work session agenda, as well as any other matter that you'd like to bring before the council. We'd ask if you, when you come forward, if you could identify yourself and if you would keep your comments to three minutes. And there is a little light on the podium that will let you know when your three minutes are up.
Thank you. My name is David Bates. I live on Philadelphia Avenue. For those of you who haven't been around as long as some of the longer-term council members, let me just give you a quick background. I was the chair of the first Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee in this town. I went through the citizens' police academy. I have worked in the past with the police department on getting grant funding for various little programs. I am very interested and concerned about public safety and have dedicated quite a bit of time in the past to that. This past week, I submitted questions to our city manager. I sent copies to the city council. I presume you all have them. I don't know if you've had a chance to read them. I'm not going to go over them. But in, in sum, what I was writing to the city manager about, and submitting questions that I would like some answers to, regards the recent crime wave, if you want to call it that, that transpired last month in the Old Town area. I was just very surprised and concerned when I had received one of the police blotters that indicated within a very, very short period of time, about four days, in and around Valentine's Day, we had some very serious incidents in Old Town and just a few blocks outside of Old Town, up on Fifth Avenue, and poplar, involving people with handguns in broad daylight in the afternoon, robbing people, threatening people. In another case, a person's car was stolen off of Laurel Avenue at 1:00 in the afternoon. Now, the questions I submitted and hope to receive answers from basically are asking if our police leadership has a plan, if they are working on proactive programs to address these kinds of things. And of course, we have that terrible incident Maple and Tool with the burglary homicide. And I'm not saying anyone could have prevented that. And I noted in the public statement that our public affairs person put out from the police department, that the suspect was caught within five minutes. And I commend our officers for a rapid apprehension, good investigation. But I would also like to say that instead of merely relying on our police department to show up after the fact, we would like to see our police working on crime prevention. We would like to see programs, proactive programs, where they are working with citizens. Right now, I don't see that. And maybe it is going on. That was the purpose of my questions. I would like to know if that is happening. And I'm here to remind you all that I'm waiting for questions to be answered. I would also urge that every one of you on the council be asking these same questions and maybe your own questions about what our police leadership is doing to try and train people, prevent crime, get the word out when something is happening so people can better protect themselves. And in particular, I guess it would be Councilmember Austin Lane, Councilmember Barry, and Councilmember Williams, because your wards are the ones that were hit in the most recent two weeks that I saw in terms of the crime blotters.
Thank you for bringing that to us, David. I hadn't, probably because it was addressed to somebody else, hadn't taken a look at your questions, but I will do that.
Okay, and that's all. I just ask that you think about your own questions and maybe get some answers for me. I would really appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have a list here. Do you want the list?
No, I'm, I'm talking, this is the public comment. Do you have a list of people who are signing up for the public hearing?
I don't know. Okay, then I'll talk on that one when it comes up.
Yes, yes.
This one's on the crime. Okay, they don't always put the crime, when it happens, where it's supposed to be. Like, my son was hit, knocked, not knocked down or anything, but he was warned as he crossed the street of Eastern Avenue onto the Maryland side that they had a gun. And they robbed him a couple of weeks ago. It's in your traffic report, but they put him up on New Hampshire Avenue. So they don't always do the report properly either. George Moxley is the name that they actually did list him right, but they put him on New Hampshire Avenue. So that didn't look too good for our city. And it was the Tacoma Park Police that we did get to the, to the place. Now, the other thing is, in the meantime, we've had one happen on Orchard, two happen on Fifth, one happen on Popular, and three on New Hampshire Avenue. Where's the police? They come after it happens. They need a better timing. Now, I've, I've also mentioned this to the ones responsible in our neighborhood. They need a closer time. They can't run like the bus on Eastern Avenue every hour.
I'm sorry, I'm just fiddling with the time.
Okay, you're fiddling with it.
You've got another couple minutes.
But we need a little better timing as to coming through the neighborhoods. It's too far apart. In other words, we could, they go down the Eastern at a certain time and they go around. If they cut up Kansas, then they go down Allegheny. These people know their roots. I know them. I know where they're going to go. If I know them and I can precisely time them, that's no good. In other words, I know when they're coming. I know when they're going to be around because I'm out here all the time. I'm up and down, I'm all over the neighborhoods. I don't want them to know when they're coming. I want a better time scale set up to be able to go through the neighborhoods and the streets. And Bruce, I think you would agree with that. If I know, so do they.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else? All right. The next item is the public hearing. I understand that there is a sign-up sheet on the podium.
City manager's comments?
Oh, I'm, I very much apologize. I'm skipping the city manager's comments.
That's okay. I'll try to keep it quick. Two items related to the community center project. The first is just to update you on the status of the, the borings that we're going to have conducted. We're in the process of putting the finishing touches on that contract. I expect that that will be signed by the end of the week. Based upon my discussions with ECS, which is the company the city will be working with, they indicated it would take approximately three to four weeks from the time the contract was executed until we received the final report. The other item related to the community center, as I know last week in my absence, Deputy City Manager Wayne Hobbs had kind of given you the heads up that there was a strong likelihood that we may not be able to use the council chamber once the work in the lobby area, the old lobby area, began. That work has been scheduled, and based on the nature of the work, as well as just the accessibility issues that are created when the lobby is closed and the elevator will not be available, it's my strong recommendation that we basically relocate not only the council meeting, but any other meetings that are held during a three-week time period to alternate locations. The elevator will be unavailable during this time period during the course of normal business. What we intend to do is basically have residents park on the public safety plaza level, and whatever business needs to be conducted, we'll actually have a staff member meet the resident or the customer downstairs. But when you have a public meeting such as tonight's council meeting, you really can't predict who plans to come, what type of accessibility issues those individuals may have. And I think it's our obligation as a public entity to basically ensure that we are meeting someplace where parking is convenient and there's not those kind of challenges. The time period that we're looking at is between April 11th and May 5th. Basically, there are three council meetings during that time period. There's also a number of board and commission meetings. With the council's concurrence, we do have a staff person who is scheduled to meet with ICB to basically explore using some of the school facilities for both the council meetings as well as any other type of board and commission meetings that would take place during that time period.
We, we can't do, schedule them for the large room here?
If you think about it, basically, the Grant Avenue entrance will be closed, basically, because there'll be overhead work being conducted by the contractor with the ceiling tiles. The flooring will also be ripped up, so the elevator will basically be unavailable. What that would basically mean is that the only way for someone who has accessibility issues to be on grade, if you will, to enter this room or any of the rooms on this level would basically be to park in the, in the rear parking lot and basically come around the library. My personal feeling is that's a little bit too challenging necessarily to impose on someone who, who we're not sure what type of constraints they may have. I think it's a little bit different when we have programs scheduled in the building where people actually sign up, because we can make contact with those individuals and try to determine what type of accommodation may be needed with a council meeting or any other type of public meeting. We really have no idea from any one night to another to know who plans to come. And my worst fear would be that someone would want to participate in a council meeting or some other type of public meeting and find that there is really no convenient or easy way for them to participate in that meeting. And I think that kind of gets to the heart of the Americans with Disabilities Act.
At one point, the council considered the possibility of having council meetings at locations other than this one for sort of outreach purposes and to enable people from different parts of the city to attend. We ultimately decided not to do that because of the difficulty of broadcasting them from other locations and the diminishment in the quality of the broadcast. As long as we're going to have to relocate anyway, though, it seems to me it might be an opportunity for us to use this to sort of go to different parts of the city and to encourage people from those parts of the city to participate, to attend the council meetings and to participate. So when you're looking at other venues, if you could look at places, at different places in the city, if there's three council meetings, maybe we can cover, you know, locations that are farther away from the, the community center here.
We'd be happy to do that. I would mention, since you brought up televising the meetings, Mayor, that, that will be one of the challenges. Obviously, anytime we move out of this chamber, we don't have the same type of camera setup. The communications staff is exploring what we can do with basically sort of remote cameras. Obviously, that won't have quite the same variation, if you will, in camera angles. And I know the city clerk has also given some thought to how we can ensure that that meeting can also be sort of translated perhaps after the fact into Granicus so we don't lose the archiving ability. Those are still issues that we are working through, but I did want to go ahead and just bring this to your attention as soon as possible. We have talked to the contractor about this timeframe. We are hopeful that perhaps the work won't take the entire three-week period, but I think at this point, this is what we need to plan to do. So with that, basically, you know, I will basically, in response to your request, Mayor, basically see if there's some alternative locations around the city. Obviously, we've got a couple of weeks, a little less than a month, to try to work this out. If there's certain locations that any council member feels that you'd like staff to explore, please let me know.
Off the top of my head, if I can just suggest Columbia Union College, Waugh, Victory Tower, and our recreation center on New Hampshire Avenue.
Any other locations for anyone?
Okay. One item on a different topic. Our councilmember Barry has, I've spoken to Derek Verlach about possibly having a tour of the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. As the council is aware, we have requested some technical planning assistance from both Montgomery County as well as park and planning, and he thought it would be helpful, and I agree, to have Mr. Verlach have the opportunity to tour the New Hampshire Avenue corridor with us. I believe Mr. Verlach has also suggested that the Montgomery County Director of Economic Development will also be invited. What I would ask, and you don't necessarily have to tell me this evening, is we are in the process of trying to put together that tour and determine what type of transportation might be needed. If any of the council members are interested in participating, if you could please either catch me at the break or send me an email and let me know that. If there's also certain days of the week that don't work for you or times of day that are difficult, if you could let us know that as well. We'd like to try to plan the tour at a time and a day that is convenient for as many council members who would like to participate.
And if I can also just make the request that maybe we can extend the amount of time that the folks are here. There have been some, there's been some interest in having him come back to see the MNC PPC Park in Old Town at the gazebo. They have, Park and Planning has done work there, and there's still some issues hanging. He was brought in at the beginning of the process, and folks thought it would be good to kind of close the loop with him at the end of the process. That could be a relatively short amount of time, but for him to see that as well would be very helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, now we are moving on to the public hearings. On the, we have two streets that have petitioned for speed humps. I think there's, I don't know if somebody can bring me the, the list that's up on the podium? Do we have somebody who can do that? I mean, we have, we have sign-up sheets, I understand. I, I will be happy to take people who haven't signed up at the end of the list.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our multi-talented cable people. We have a public hearings on Allegheny and Sligo Mill Road. I'm going to... I'm going to do these. We've got a couple of people from each street. What I'm going to do is, the two people that we've got from the Sligo Mill, then the two people from Allegheny, and then I'll just, anyone else from either street who wishes to speak. That's the way I'll do it, because there isn't really, I guess, a need to necessarily separate them. So we're opening the public hearing on the traffic calming measures on Sligo Mill Road. The first person is Helen McDonald, McDarmid. I'm sorry, Helen McDarmid.
Hello, my name is Helen McDarmid.
If you can just move the microphone up so it's facing you. There you go.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
So I'm Helen McDarmid, and this is my daughter Zoe. And we live on Sligo Mill Road. And we are here to say that we would very much like to have a speed bump installed on our street because speeding of cars and trucks is a real problem, and it has been for many years now. And the street is somewhat narrow and doesn't have a sidewalk. And over half of the homes on the street have children who are 12 years or younger. And so we feel it would improve the safety of the street to have a speed bump installed. And so I ask the council to approve this measure and hopefully to install it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Nellie Moxley?
Yeah, I've got one more that's going to talk.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take anyone who hasn't signed up at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I understand that there's two people here signed up for the Allegheny Avenue. Carol Clayton?
Hi, I'm Carol Clayton. We have, I think, 12 kids in a two-block, is that right, 12? In a two-block range. And they're, it's sort of the median age, sitting right here, a very active bunch. And our part of the street doesn't have a speed hump. There's a blind curve, and cars don't have a stop sign at Elm, so they come roaring around the corner. And then they go around this other blind corner, passing an area that we've set up for the kids to play where there's a couple of swings, tire swing and a picnic table, and the Keeley's driveway, a very popular spot. But they, the cars and trucks don't slow down, and someone's going to get hurt, and it's going to be one of the kids, and it's not going to be pretty. So I would like a speed hump or a bump, as I told my neighbor who's on the, the traffic board, that would rattle people's mufflers if they go above five miles an hour, hopefully even knock them off if that's what it takes. And, and I have to tell you, I never thought that I would ask for another speed hump in Tacoma, but we need it. And do you guys want to say anything? Carl? No? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Susan Shepard?
Yes, I have nothing further really to say, just in support of what she said already. I have two children at home, and the children do a play right in front of my house, and they do dash out into the street if their parents aren't watching, which we try to do. But we have, as Carol said, 12 kids or more riding their bikes, and it's a, it's a major thoroughfare from Allegheny down from Elm to Kansas, and the cars speed very quickly there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All righty, so anyone else who would like to speak on either the Sligo Mill Road or the Allegheny Avenue, if when you come forward, you identify which of those streets you're speaking to?
Thank you. Ross Chapel, and I'm interested in Sligo Mill Road. I think a major problem that hasn't been pointed out is... I think a major problem that hasn't been pointed out is that Sligo Mill is a commuter cut-through from Eastern to get to New Hampshire. So in the morning, you have a steady stream of traffic that has no interest in our neighborhood except to go through, and I would estimate they often are going 40, 45 miles an hour. It's a two-block stretch, and they can just put their foot on it. In the afternoon, you have them turning left contrary to signage from Eastern Avenue. The police presence is absolutely minimal. I mean, once every two years, the police will show up and ticket people for illegal left turns, but that has no effect. And we do have kids that walk down in the morning to VFW to get on the school bus. We have kids and adults that go to the convenience stores on New Hampshire by cutting through across the street. I think it really should take two speed bumps, one in from each end a little bit, so they just can't get their acceleration up. They have no regard for our community whatsoever. They're transient commuters and a real hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, David Keeley, Allegheny Avenue. There are a lot of kids on our street who are probably median age, about seven or eight. And the amount of truck traffic and commercial traffic on our street, I've noticed, has gone up in the past several years. There's a lot more delivery trucks, a lot more UPS, FedEx, and those guys have absolutely no, I don't even think they know that the speed bump's 25. They just, you know, fly from start to stop as fast as they can. And they're so large that I don't think they could even see small children unless they are way out in front of them. So my concern is with the amount of commercial traffic that seems to have increased on our street. Also, the number of home businesses in the neighborhood, the number of houses under construction. So there's just a lot of traffic from, you know, people who don't live there that just don't care about the neighborhood. So that's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak on this? Nellie?
I don't see anybody else. The speed humps are the cheapest, easiest, and least effective, most destructive of any traffic calming solution. That's in one of the articles here. I have to agree with that. And I think we talked about grids. What is that, Bruce, we talked about? The long type of thing?
Speed tables?
Yes. I believe that's what we discussed, and I believe that's what was supposed to be being looked at. I also had discussed with you, and the community discussed with you as well, it wasn't just me, as to the fact that we would have a device of Sheraton that we could talk about and find out from the state if there was any possible way of doing something about that particular entrance into Sligo Mill Road. Your engineer was supposed to look at this. When I signed this paper, if you notice, it was with the engineer, to hear from him and see what he came up with and all the ideas before we could send it. The neighborhood didn't vote for this. We have the six signatures of, oh, she got eight, I believe, six or eight, from the street itself. Now, yes, there are children, and yes, if you were to do this, I would suggest what you do is a speed table in front of their home, right between the houses there where their home is, to slow it down. That's coming in off of Eastern. The other one would be do something about Sheraton as to somehow calming device right there on Sheraton itself. Let them know when they come off of New Hampshire Avenue, they're going to hit something. So that would be very acceptable. Dan has a new business that's coming up down through there, and we're going to have a lot of businesses. They're parking over on the park from the other places up above there, and there's a lot of trucks right now because of the during construction that's going on in our neighborhoods. So yes, when you put the speed bumps, if you put them in the wrong places and put too many without getting the full impact of what's going on, you're going to, all you're going to do is put them onto Fourth Avenue where all the kids do generate to, Fourth and Orchard Avenue. All the traffic will take a right, just come right on back around and come down there. We're already backed up. We don't have enough police presence, and we don't have enough of surveillance at the time the children are there, and the signs still haven't been fixed, Bruce. As to Fourth Avenue and Kansas, we're backed up in the morning hours where traffic is bumper to bumper coming out onto Eastern and going to New Hampshire. So if you take and put speed bumps in one area, you're going to just push them to the next areas, and Popular is going to be horrendous if you think it's bad now. You've also got another problem that you better look at, and that's the people parking on Popular as you come in off of New Hampshire Avenue. So you see, we are digesting all that's going on, but the engineers' report, we need to discuss a little further before you go and put all that money into two speed humps, when I don't believe that would be the proper thing to put down.
Okay. We, we have, as part of the materials that was provided to the council, we have a letter that's signed by you that says that the request was discussed by Pinecrest on September 8th, September 20th, and November 3rd, and the vast majority of those present voted to endorse the petition to install one or more appropriate traffic calming devices. It didn't say speed humps, it said traffic calming devices.
Right.
On the 6,400 block of Sligo Mill Road. Are you saying that, that, that letter is not accurate?
It says permission to be sent to city engineer, and if Bruce remembers correctly, the letter so stated as to, we would talk about what was happening.
But the, but the letter's addressed to me, to the, the letter's addressed to the mayor.
Mayor Kathy Porter, November the 3rd, 2005.
Right. So I, I guess what I'm trying to, in order to get, in order to install speed humps, the council requires a couple of things in order to, it'd be, in order for the issue to be elevated to the council for consideration. It takes two things. One is the signatures of an appropriate number, two-thirds of the residents on that street and adjoining. And the other, if they're, if the adjoining streets are ways that they can, the people on those streets, if they're going to be affected by it, is the simplest way to say.
Right.
But the other thing is that it requires a meeting of the neighborhood association or, you know, a gathering of the appropriate blocks and a, and some indication to the council of the feelings of those at the neighborhood association. So actually, what I'm trying to ascertain here is whether the letter that is addressed to me and signed by you actually accurately represents the feelings of those that were at the meetings.
This particular letter was done by Mrs. McDarmid, but she was back here, and she'll verify. I was asked more or less to sign.
But you, but you don't, I, I guess what I'm trying to determine is whether...
I can't really say I want it or I don't want it due to the fact that that's not the way...
Well, I'm not, I guess, I'm not really asking...
The Pinecrest Association signed it up this way, as I see it.
Okay. I, I, if I'm understanding you correctly, you are saying that, that you, as an individual, have one opinion, and I guess what I'm trying to determine is whether the letter that you signed as the neighborhood association president is sort of the accurate reflection of what the meetings thought. And I understand, I understand, Nellie, that you have a different opinion.
It doesn't matter really one way or the other what my opinion is. I gave them the benefit of presenting this to the council because they have that right, and the fact that they had their signatures.
Right.
The way that we hit substantially talked about it at the meeting that night was that it would go to the engineer, and then we would all discuss it again after it came to you, and we all discuss it again as to what we really can do about. I don't believe that this is, the one street is all we're going to end up talking about before this is all said and done.
Well, that, that may very well be true, and that's why those, these things get sent to the larger neighborhood association. But I, I appreciate that clarification. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on either of these two requests, Sligo Mill Road or Allegheny Avenue? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearings on the two traffic calming devices. The city has a, has a number of things on our legislative agenda this evening. We are scheduled to get back to this item as the first item on our work session agenda, which would be a decision, discussion by the council and a decision as to whether to send the petitions forward or not. There will be other opportunities for people to speak at the time that the petitions come before the council as an, as ordinances. So you are welcome to stay for the, for the work session discussion. If you cannot stay, you can watch it either on cable channel or web streaming, we now have that capability. And you will also have an opportunity to speak on these two issues as they come forward to the council in ordinance form if the council decides to send them forward. So you, we welcome you to stay, but you don't have to. The next item on the agenda, we're now moving to our regular meeting agenda. The first is a resolution regarding the Potomac River Watershed Trash Treaty and the 2006 Trash Free Potomac Watershed Initiative Action Agreement.
I've got yes.
Okay, well, Bruce votes yes, not even having known whether the issue was going to be moved. Yes, this is an effort that the, that a group of people sponsored by the Allison, the Alice Ferguson Foundation is pulling together involving elected leaders. They have invited the city of Tacoma Park to join them. The Trash Summit, as you can see from the materials, is actually going to be this Thursday. I think that they've already done the signups, but maybe they could squeak you in at the last minute if you were interested in doing it. Darryl Braithwaite is attending for the city. I'm going to be there for the first part of it. Is there anything else you wanted to mention about this, Darryl? Darryl and I have had conversations in which he's indicated that we are well ahead of the curve on these efforts anyway.
Yeah, in terms of the financial impact of what this signed agreement would, would be, most of what's included in the, in the treaty language is encouraging jurisdictions to take action relative to reducing trash and pollutants that make their way to the Anacostia. Many of the items are already underway in Tacoma Park. We have a street sweeping program that's certainly kind of a keystone program to try to remove trash and litter off the street. We also have a stormwater management program. Oftentimes, the trash and litter ends up being contributed to the waterway through the stormwater system. So our program of TV inspection of lines, cleaning the, cleaning the stormwater lines would, would certainly fit into that category. They also discuss promotion of recycling. We certainly have an aggressive and active recycling program, and that's underway every day of the week in the city. So there are many, many programs that the city already has established. There's also interest in promoting or sharing information that's developed by the organizations involved in this. There'll be a lot of sharing between jurisdictions if there's particular educational campaigns or promotional materials, and we can certainly have those available on the city's website and use the newsletter as a vehicle for, you know, getting informational pieces, community education kind of pieces made notice of. So those are kind of the, the key components of the program that signers on to this agreement are, are asked to support.
Thank you. The resolution has been moved in second. Is there any council comments on this resolution? Any public comments on the resolution? Won't you come forward and...
Good evening. I'm Bruce Sidwell. I live at 7209 Spruce Avenue. I am president of the Friends of Sligo Creek, and I just wanted to say that our organization is very pleased that the city has shown as much interest in trash and trash pickup especially as they have, and we want to commend you for that. There are some other things that are going on with trash. I just wanted to ring to your attention. One is that on the 22nd of March, the Friends of Sligo Creek is actually having a program meeting talking trash, all sorts of aspects of trash, of ways to prevent trash from getting into the creek, but also picking up better, et cetera. And that's at Long, Long Branch Community Center. In April, we have two events for picking up trash. Through the years, we've put in many thousands of hours of volunteer time picking up trash. And one of them actually is sponsored by the Alice Ferguson. I think it's on the 22nd on, yeah, which would be Earth Day, and then there's another event on the 8th of April. Actually, I make, I think I'm getting these backwards. I think on April 8th, on, which is a Saturday, the Alice Ferguson organization is helping us to do a lot of cleaning up at different spots on Sligo. And on the 22nd on Earth Day, the Anacostia Watershed Society is also working with us on other sites that maybe were not covered on the 8th. In any case, we're quite interested in, in trash pickup, I think the community is, and I commend you for your efforts in this area. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to commend the Friends of Sligo Creek for the enormous efforts that you all make and what is one of the most important tributaries in the city of Tacoma Park. And I assume that we could, we, I know we're already working with you on publicizing things, and if there's other things that we could do that would help you publicize these events, I'm sure we could do that. So thank you all for the efforts that you make. All right, are there any other public comments? All right, seeing none, the resolution in front of the council is the authorization, authorizing me to sign the Watershed Trash Treaty and the, the Free Potomac Watershed Initiative 2006 Action Plan. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is the second reading of an ordinance on the transfer to Montgomery County of land behind the fire station for additional parking. Would someone like to move this?
Check.
It's been moved and seconded. Any council comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering whether this urgency, doing this today in light of the earlier email we received, documents received, that the county's deciding to go forward with a substantial, appears to me to be a substantial change to the design of the fire station that is not at all what we or the community agreed to. And I'm wondering whether maybe we should reserve taking this stuff until we resolve the other problem with the county. I'm really, I'm just really bothered by what we read, I think, like new elevations. I'm not sure that the residents are going to be terribly proud of this, and it seems to be that we're not doing the issue.
Can you let us know what you refer to? Maybe you can talk a little bit about what was in the email. I don't know if all the council members have had a chance to check their email this afternoon.
Yeah, we recently learned, actually through a circuitous route, by being called by the Carroll Avenue Neighborhood Association, of an upcoming hearing in front of the, excuse me, Historic Preservation Commission in regard to a request made by the Montgomery County regarding some alterations to the fire station design that had previously been discussed with HPC several times. And formerly, they have their historic area work permit, so they're asking for several considerations of revisions to their historic area work permit. While I wouldn't describe any of the items that are listed on there as significant changes in the, in the design of the fire station, there are certainly some that we would have expected and, and hoped for discussion with the community and an update from the county to the city prior to them moving forward to the Historic Preservation Commission to request this kind of information. They've set a meeting up for March 22nd, which is next Wednesday, I believe. Certainly, the city will be in attendance, as will be many representatives from the neighborhood, particularly those neighbors of the, the fire station. I can talk a bit about some of the design element changes that they're, they listed in the letter to HPC if, if you want to get into the specifics.
I don't think, my concern is that discussing them isn't very visual, and essentially the changes are visual. And while I'd agree that some of the stuff seems less important, I thought that they remove all the dormers, that the drawings and the elevations of the building with and without are substantially different. It goes from being what I thought was, you know, features broken up on what's a very large building, to something that begins to look more like a monolithic wall, and I'm not sure that's going to go over very well.
Can you let us know who you've heard from? I, I believe I saw something from an Old Town Carroll resident about this.
Yes.
Have, have we made contact with Historic Tacoma?
Yeah, Lorraine Pierceall's been sharing email interchanges with us on, on the topic.
Darryl, you said that the changes are not significant, you don't think, but from a structural point, they're not necessarily significant, but from a design perspective, it sounded like they were maybe significant. Is that accurate?
Well, some of the changes, for instance, are in the rear of the building. They reference a section of the rear wall that's going to be, their suggestion is to not have a brick, it was originally designed, but instead a hardy plank. Now, again, not knowing exactly the, the space on the wall that they're referring to, they just refer to the upper, upper rear wall of the fire station building. So whether or not that presents a significant design change, it's kind of, at this point, we still need some additional information. But it's changing out a, a finished material, a brick material, to a hardy plank, which is more a siding look. The other change is they're going to be putting synthetic stucco on the, on the clock tower. I do not recall what was originally envisioned for the exterior finish of the, of the tower. It is 40 feet in the air, so it is quite a bit elevated.
I, I, I think that in, in view of the fact that many members of the council haven't actually seen this, I think Mark has a proposal.
I'd like to move the table this for two weeks.
To table it for two weeks. The, the item has come before the council. The motion is to table it. All those in favor of tabling it for two weeks, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, this will come back to the council on the 27th.
And I would hope that we would get official from the county, official information rather than moving those stuff.
That's not, I mean, they're real drawings. She's got the elevations.
But did they come through from the county?
No.
Or did they go through the circuitous?
No. My understanding is that this didn't come to the city officially. The city was not notified.
That's correct. I would just add that late this afternoon, I did leave a message for one of the staff people in the county executive's office. We have not made personal contact, but I did leave a message indicating and expressing our concern that this was filed without any notification to the city.
I guess I'd like to elevate the level of concern. I mean, we went through a brutal process to reach an agreement on this fire station. And to go through everything we went through and for them to propose these kind of changes and not even bring us back into the loop in an appropriate way, it just doesn't feel right at all.
And if I can just add that the people who were involved in that long process pretty much have either retired, been reassigned to other areas of work in the county, so I can in some ways understand how this happens. On the other hand, they have to have known about this past, and I know that we've had an offer to come back from Steve Lamphier. Even, he's kind of tangentially still involved in the process, and he understands all of that. But I can imagine that maybe somebody who has more line responsibility for it just kind of did it the way the county always does it and didn't think about this. It does not excuse it, but I can understand how it happened.
My understanding, yeah, my understanding also is this probably has moved from Steve Lamphier's office, as Councilmember Williams indicated. He's very tangentially related to this project at this point. It appears it is now moved into, their Department of Public Works are permitting or whoever handles their capital projects, and those individuals, as I understand it, Darryl, have not been involved in the past and may not be quite as sensitive as Mr. Lamphier was to the community's concern about this project and the aesthetics of the building.
And now they will be.
Yeah, I think this is a wise move and sends a strong signal to the county and, you know, puts us back in a footing where they really need to include the community input as part of a decision-making process.
And thank you for your explanation. This sort of caught us by surprise, since none of us, I think, found out before this afternoon, so it makes it kind of difficult for people to be fully informed. So thank you for...
Yeah, Friday was the earliest we heard about it, and we've been on a fast, furious phone cycle since then.
I know, and I appreciate your being willing to brief us on short notice and give us as much information, and I'm sure we'll get as much as we can out to the people who are concerned as quickly as we can. The next item on the agenda is a second reading of an ordinance on financial and accounting services. We did discuss this at first reading. Does someone want to move this?
Move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is any additional council discussion? Terry?
I continue to get concerns from my constituents that this is not a good way to staff our work. I will vote for this tonight because I understand the explanation from the city manager, but concerned that we are continuing to staff opposition through short-term contracts.
I think the city manager did give us the explanation of why that was happening at this point. I don't know if the city manager wants to repeat herself or not.
Not necessarily. I mean, as I indicated, there's been a variety of factors, I think the council's aware, over the past few years that I think have necessitated the use of Ms. McKenzie's services. As I indicated when this came up two weeks ago, the Director of Finance and I are sort of still reviewing in preparation for the FY07 budget submitted to the council in terms of what's the best way to address any type of needs, to make sure our financial records are maintained up to date. Obviously, Ms. McKenzie does have significant historical knowledge of the city, and as we have talked about in the past, most recently during the council goal-setting session, at times using a consultant on an as-needed basis is a much less expensive proposition than adding staff. So that's certainly something that we'll continue to evaluate as we always do.
There's something that raises a question, at least how bad our books were if it has taken this long and this much consulting services to help us get back in order.
Well, I think everyone's painfully aware of how difficult FY04, getting the audit done, and some of that stretches into '05. I certainly do not want to leave any misimpression this evening that our books are in poor shape. The council has been getting their quarterly financial reports on time, so we are maintaining up to date. But I think this council had also indicated to me, in light of the problems we had in FY04, that if there was a, if I anticipated a need in order to keep maintaining our records, that I was to bring that before you, and that is what I'm doing this evening.
Any other comments? Is there any public comments on this second reading of an ordinance? All right, seeing none. Since this is the second reading, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Alvin?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Ordinance passes at second reading. The next item is the first reading of another budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Five. Does someone want to move that?
Sir, move.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Do you want to say a little bit about what's in it?
Yeah, sure, just briefly. When I gave the council a project report for the community center, I guess it was two weeks ago, one of the things that I had noted is that I anticipated that expenditures for the community center fund would likely exceed budgeted expenditures at some point in the near future. We are still well within the appropriation, but I did anticipate that that would change. Part of that is attributable to certain expenses that I thought would hit in '05, actually are hitting in '06, some of its timing, and some of it is just project expenses that we have been talking about for some time relative to outstanding proposed change orders. The council's direction at that time was that you wanted me to go ahead and bring forward an amendment to you for the community center fund to make sure that there was no chance that we would exceed the appropriation. So what is before you this evening basically would increase the appropriation for the current fiscal year by $174,693. That amount, just to kind of elaborate, is basically what I did is I looked at the expenditures that we have incurred on the project, not only since the fund's inception, which was in FY03, but also expenditures that may have been incurred by the city related to the project in the prior fiscal year, specifically FY01 and FY02. So what this budget amendment would do would basically bring fund expenditures overall throughout the course of the project in line with project revenues as they exist today. There are still a number of outstanding financial issues, as the council is aware of. I do anticipate, as I indicated two weeks ago, that even with passage of this budget amendment, that it is likely that another amendment will be required prior to the end of the fiscal year as some of those proposed change order issues and those issues that are the subject of mediation get resolved. But the council had asked that we go ahead and bring something forward to you at the earliest opportunity. So if there's any questions regarding what's before you this evening, I'd be happy to answer your questions. The only other thing I might just mention that's also covered by this amendment has to do with the sale of the Piney Branch properties we have been carrying, both on the community center financial report in the past until the report on the February 27th, as well as in the budget, that we anticipated that we would receive proceeds of $400,000 for the sale of those two properties. As the council's aware, several weeks ago, you did authorize the sale of those properties for $388,000. So the other item that is covered by this amendment basically reduces the proceeds from the sale of that property by $12,000.
If you can just clarify your remarks about FY01 and '02, I'm not quite sure the implications on that.
Going to implications, the community center fund was actually established by the city to track project expenses in fiscal year '03. That is the first time that you'll actually see that fund existing on the city's books. Obviously, there were some expenditures related to the project that were incurred prior to the establishment of the community center fund. There were some architectural and design fees primarily, and at that time, prior to the establishment of the community center fund, those expenditures were actually recorded in the special revenue fund. We have been carrying those expenses on the community center financial report prior to my tenure, Councilmember Williams, when you were actually doing those reports. But what I basically did in preparing the amendment that is before you this evening is actually adding up all the project expenses regardless of where they were recorded and basically kind of booking them, if you will, against the project revenues.
Okay, so this doesn't really change expenditures or revenues in the overall sense of those by the city, but it reapportions them to the correct fund so that in the future, somebody wanting to look and see exactly what was spent that is properly assigned to the community center can find it all in one place?
No, actually, it does not do that. In order to actually put them all in the community center fund, what the city would literally have to do from a financial accounting standpoint is go through and do restatements of all its prior year financial reports, and that becomes a very expensive proposition. What we have been doing sort of offline, if you will, to make sure that we have a good sense of what project revenues are and what project expenditures are is sort of tracking the prior fiscal years kind of offline, if you will.
Okay, so this is essentially...
I get the turnout from the prior year.
This is essentially putting asterisks in the record book.
That's correct. And really, what I did to come up with the appropriation or the revised appropriation for FY06 is literally took the project revenues that were recorded on the financial report for February 27th, added up all the known expenditures from FY01 to FY05 that are basically audited numbers, and looked at what's left. And basically, the amendment that is before you this evening would adjust the appropriation for FY06 in terms of what is left from available revenues. Is that, did I answer your question, Councilmember Williams?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, this ordinance has been moved in second. Is any council comments? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? All right, seeing none. This is the first reading of the ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ordinance passes at first reading. The next item is a resolution regarding the state highway improvements planned for University in New Hampshire.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's...
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Alana Blanchard. I'm on the planning staff with the city, and I'll be presenting the resolution on roadway and pedestrian improvements on University Boulevard and New Hampshire Avenue. And I'd like to point out, I did hand out a correction sheet. This is up on the web for the public. But for item number four, it has the incorrect diagram on it, and this now shows the correct diagram for our comments on the slip lane at the intersection of University Boulevard and New Hampshire Avenue. So it's traveling from University Boulevard onto New Hampshire Avenue. And that, the purple area that you see is actually the proposed sidewalk area, and the pink line is where the new path of auto travel would be.
Can you, okay, on number four, can you sort of say where this is?
Yes.
I thought I understood it, but I clearly don't.
This is the intersection of University Boulevard, and you can see University Boulevard is on the left-hand side, and New Hampshire Avenue crosses University Boulevard at an angle at that location and creates what are, they're called pork chops or triangles. And you can see underneath, there's a double line that forms the triangle, and it's actually the largest triangle of all the four triangles at this intersection. Each corner has a triangle and a slip lane with a free right turn for vehicles traveling in all directions. This one happens to be particularly large, which enables cars to travel fairly fast through it. And so State Highway suggested shortening the slip lane on one side, which would be on the New Hampshire Avenue side, and we're suggesting that they also shorten it on the University Boulevard side. At that portion, the sidewalk there is very narrow, it's right up against the wall. I believe it's about eight feet wide, and given the number of pedestrians in the area, it seems to us that it would make sense to widen the sidewalk by shortening the island of that location.
Okay, thank you.
At the last council meeting, we brought forward several comments that we requested that the council consider for comments in the form of a resolution to State Highway. And these are in a resolution which is attached to the cover memo. And these are all comments that we went over, but we did include further diagrams for your information, so if you may have questions. But essentially, the resolution expresses appreciation for the work that State Highway has done so far, supports marking across block across University Boulevard at Lebanon, and it also, we did add in the consideration of additional features such as in-road lighting, overhead warnings, or other mechanism, supports installing wide sidewalks with a landscape buffer to meet the master plan recommendations where feasible, supports the expansion of the sidewalk at the southwest corner of University Boulevard and New Hampshire Avenue by further shortening the island and slip lane on the west side, which is what we just looked at, and also supports the addition of a crosswalk on all four sides of the intersection at the entrance to the proposed transit center.
Are there any council questions? I think we did talk about this a bit the last time. Any council comments? Is there any public comments on this resolution of support and encouragement of additional items? All right, seeing none. Are you getting up to make a comment, Nellie?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's good.
You need to move the microphone down some, Nellie.
That really looks good. I have one question. How's this going to involve where the metro is going to be there? Is it going to cause a problem? Have you got that all laid out?
You're talking about if there's a potential purple line stop at that location? How is this? Do you want to speak to that, Alana?
At the moment, the By County Transit Way, or the purple line, or any of the other names that it has, is not being considered in the plans, in that the transit center has been, a decision was made by MTA and SHA to design the transit center independent of the By County Transit Way, and also the pedestrian safety improvements in order that they be installed in as timely fashion as possible. And the current timeline intends for this project to go out to bid in October. So this is a quite short timeframe for a State Highway project.
Is there any reason to believe that any of this would be inconsistent with a underground station that might be at some location nearby?
I believe that any underground station would require a significant amount of reconstruction of any features, but I'm not an expert in this area, so...
Okay.
But I think that any future infrastructure would probably require reconfiguration of the entire roadway. But, and again, not the correct word.
And we don't want to hold our breath till that station's constructed anyway, and certainly we don't want to continue to have pedestrian deaths and injuries in the period of time until they get around to doing the station. Thank you. Any other public comments, questions? All right, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. Thank you.
I had a comment.
Yes.
Somebody asked that question about where the purple line would be, and when the State Highway administration folks were here, they said that it would stop right at that same station.
The plan for the By County Purple Line Transit Way, whatever they're calling it these days, is to have a stop in the general crossroads area. At least, that appears to be the current plans from the briefing that we saw. They haven't ever specified the precise location in the crosswalk and the crossroads for it, nor have they ever, they haven't actually specified the alignment yet, so those are still up in the air. But we have about as much commitment as you can get at this point, that there will be a station somewhere in the vicinity of the crossroads. And I think what Alana said is that rather than waiting however long it may be at this point until that happens, that we need to improve the pedestrian safety immediately.
Just call it the bi-purple way.
The bi-purple way? Next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding state legislation to require the removal of mercury switches. The, I know this came forward both from Councilmember Austin Lane and from Councilmember Clay. I don't know if either of you all wants to make a comment on it.
Well, I want to thank Catherine Tunis, and I know there are some other folks involved in drafting the resolution, I think out of Ward One, doing some reviews as well. I've been learning a lot about mercury in the environment since Catherine brought this issue to me and spent some time with the Mercury Policy Project website. And one of the things that I thought was so amazing is how little mercury it takes to contaminate the watershed. And it's particularly interesting to me because as a child, my father worked in science industries and used to bring home mercury, and yeah, he loved to play with it and pour it into my hand, and probably the amount that he poured into my hand could do some significant damage to a small lake or a pond. do some significant damage to a small lake or a pond. Maybe that's what's wrong with me today, but, but I really appreciate you bringing this forward, and I'm glad that Mayor Porter was able to get it on the agenda quickly so that we can go on record and, and have this as a, as a tool for Catherine and other folks to go to Annapolis and, and lobby for this important legislation.
I just wanted to thank Tim Mail, and I think Kevin Mills was involved in this as well, and Catherine has spearheaded it. It's, it's important, and I'm glad to support it. This had, the original intention was to include this in the legislative update, but found out that there is something happening this week in the legislature where it would be helpful to have our position on this, and so I did move it on to a resolution format. Karen?
Thank you, Mayor Porter, and I'm glad you were able to find time on our agenda to address this issue, and I thank the-
Of course, you've gone beyond the time that we promised to already, but go ahead.
I thank the Committee on the Environment for bringing this forward. I first became aware of the problem that mercury poses for our waterways as I was maintaining the website for the hospitals for a healthy environment. And I'm glad to say that the Washington Adventist Hospital is a partner in that program, and so is working to recycle all mercury-containing items at the hospital. And I look forward to the Committee on the Environment bringing back a proposal to this council on a recycling program for mercury devices citywide, not just the, the state legislation that we're talking about tonight. Thank you.
Please?
And I just wanted to add that this is for vehicles. I know that there are still mercury switches in houses as well, and I don't know whether there's any effort to capture that. I'm sure it's a much smaller percentage since they haven't been used in quite some time, but I know they're out there because I occasionally see the electrician go, "Oh, a mercury switch," and start rolling it around and say, "Anybody want to touch it?"
And of course, he doesn't roll it anywhere near a water source, of course.
No.
But of course, the fluorescent lights also contain mercury, which should be recycled.
I think that's not the only reason they should be recycled. I think there's others too. Anyway, all right, I think we've gone well beyond the time, as Alana said this anyway. Is, the, the resolution has been moved and seconded. Any additional council comments? Is there any public comments on this resolution?
Hi, I'm Catherine Tunis. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Committee on the Environment, and yes, I'm very proud to bring this forward to our council. I think it's a win-win all around because not only is the elemental mercury that you roll around in your hand a problem because it is absorbed through the skin, but once it gets into the environment, it turns into a much more lethal form called methylmercury, which is much more toxic. So it's important to keep, keep it out of the environment, and indeed, it can bioaccumulate more than six million times the concentration that's in the water you'll find in the fish. So that's a real problem. This, I have to say that one of the reasons why we're able to bring this to the legislature so quickly in such a good format is because of the work that was done from other states and the Quicksilver Caucus and the Environmental Council of States and a number of other state organizations. They've been doing research on this, they have had pilot programs out there for a number of years. There are a number of states that already have programs. This one is modeled on New Jersey's, which is one of the best ones that is out there. We were able to have a little time to talk with staff from New Jersey and as well as other staff, state staffs on conference calls, and so got some ideas from them in terms of how to improve their law. So it, I think it's an excellent piece of legislation. I really hope we can get it through. It's, it's important to get it out of the cars at this point in time because they're about to go off and be melted. Once the cars get melted, the mercury goes up in the air, falls down into the water, and then bioaccumulates in the food chain. The switches in the houses, you're right, is a problem. People don't know that they exist, but they are out there, as well as in some old thermostats that people have in their houses. They, people can take those, as well as fluorescent light bulbs, to household hazardous waste days or to the transfer station on a Saturday, I think actually even all, most of the, most of the week. But I have talked to Darryl about the possibility of being able to collect mercury devices in the city, and there may be some barriers, but we can certainly point people towards the recycling options that the state has. And as a matter of fact, Tim Mail, who's a constituent of Joy's, who's also worked with us on this, has written an article that will appear in the April newsletter about mercury, and will have a little text box in there about what people can do with their thermometers and fluorescent light bulbs and other things. So I really appreciate the council's support on this, but, you know, we were just in the right place at the right time to be able to pull all this information together and put it in front of the legislature. Hopefully, they'll do the right thing, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? All right, seeing no one else, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Next item on the agenda, we are now moving to our work session agenda. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of the traffic calming request from Allegheny Avenue and Sligo Mill Road.
I did want to let you know that the city engineer did go out to both locations and make an assessment of the area and make a determination as to what his recommendation may be, or if there were any serious concerns from an engineer's point of view on the request. He found none. He thought both streets and locations warranted speed bumps. He was thinking in terms of the city standard speed bump for Allegheny Avenue. That's a short, a short section of the street. There are already several speed bumps on the other part of Allegheny, but there is none between Elm Avenue and the Dog Lake, for lack of a better word, where the road turns. And it also falls within the, the city policy in terms of distance from a corner and distance from an intersection. So he thought the appropriate number would be one speed bump in that location, pretty much right in the middle between the Elm Avenue intersection and the Dog Lake portion of Allegheny Avenue. On Sligo Mill Road, he recommended two speed bumps, I think kind of along the same lines as though one gentleman has spoken in support of the petition, mentioned, basically to keep the traffic slowed throughout the portion of Sligo Mill Road from eastern to where it comes in contact with Sheridan Avenue. He thought that to be effective, he needed more than one, and recommended two in that location. He didn't really take a look at, or advocate for a speed table, sort of didn't see the combination of factors that made it warrant a speed table versus a speed hump. The cost factor is a significant difference, and you're usually trying to address some other issues with speed table, whether it be an area for pedestrian crossing or things like that. And I think the intention of what we could gather from the petition process that we'd heard was there was an interest to slow down cars that were basically speeding through from one location to another, not making that area their destination. And walkers tend to walk along one side of the street. We don't have an issue of crossing or something on one side of the street that's attracting a great deal of pedestrians to cross. If there was a location where people were going to, some kind of public location, a speed table might make more sense in that regard. But his recommendation was that the area could be addressed with two speed bumps. And again, those would probably be within 250 feet of the intersection or the stop signs at either end.
You know, I know that where you were just talking on Sligo Mill, that all of the houses are on one side. For anybody who's not familiar with that particular location, the other side of the street is the back of the commercial area, including the slope down to East Hampshire Center that was part of the whole project that we recently took a position on. The, if, if I can try and characterize the, the discussion that took place in the neighborhood, it was that there were a number of people who were for this. There was some discussion about understanding what the options were and how it might affect the wider area. I think those are some legitimate concerns, but I think that the process that we have in place and the recommendation of the engineer for the two speed bumps is a good way to go. We have, I think the concerns about, well gee, if you put it on one street and then you just move it down to another street are completely accurate. I think that's been a, something that the council has tried to address in the past with neighborhood-wide traffic studies, that there were a number of in the mid to late 90s, trying to recognize that you don't want to just take a piecemeal approach. And I think one of the other things that comes into play in that particular instance is Dan Robinson, who's here, who's built the, who's in the process of building his building there, has realized and brought it to my attention and to staff's attention that the, the, shall we say, traffic calming devices that were installed by Prince George's County before this area was in the city included the turn restrictions coming through off of trying to stop the cut-through traffic of New Hampshire Avenue in the morning of essentially turning right on Sheridan, left on Sligo Mill, and then getting to Eastern Avenue that way. The effect now, as things are changing and there's some development happening there and develop, more development proposed there for Sligo Mill Road in that block between Sheridan and Orchard is that if the people who work at those establishments don't get there early enough in the morning, they're essentially performing illegal turns to try and get into work unless they kind of go way around. So there are some thoughts to trying to address how those restrictions might change. I think in the end, this may necessitate a little bit wider look at how traffic gets dealt with in that particular area, but I think the concerns of the, of the neighbors on Sligo Mill are legitimate in terms of the traffic speeding through there. There isn't really much to slow them down. I think it's also incumbent upon us to make sure that there's some increased police enforcement because if the neighbors are feeling like they only see the police there once in two years to deal with that turn restriction, that's not the level that the police were able to provide when that area first annexed in and unified into the city. That was one of the areas where the police had a large presence and made a real dent in the turns that were happening there and made it a lot safer. So I think some, some occasional, non-scheduled, random, sporadic enforcement of that will catch people and make it so that they never know when they're going to get some enforcement, and therefore, they'd better not turn against that turn restriction anytime. And then all we have to do is address making sure that Dan and his employees and other people who are building businesses there can get to their businesses without being slapped with tickets. And I haven't heard any, any real opposition to anything on Allegheny. I think that one is pretty much pro forma.
Are there any other council thoughts about this? Colleen?
I'm really interested in making certain that the speed bumps that we install meet the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, and I've had some conversations with folks on the staff and the city attorney about this, and I wondered if we had any responses on that yet. My understanding is that if you receive federal funding, you have to have an accessible path from the residences in your community to the bus stop or the site where you're providing those services. And so if you install a speed bump and it's, it doesn't meet the, the grade requirements under the ADA, you need to have a sidewalk pass around, or I don't know if it's possible to have a cut in the speed bump itself that makes the, that makes the speed bump passable. Do we have any feedback on that? That's one comment. I have another comment, also.
Yeah, I, when I spoke to the city attorney earlier today about a different matter, actually, the accessibility for this building, I did mention to her that I'd heard that you had some concerns. My understanding is that research is still ongoing, so I don't know that I have a definitive answer from a legal standpoint in terms of what type of modifications can be made in a speed bump. I defer to Darryl on that one.
Yeah, we haven't taken a look at it formally. I'm just, you know, off the cuff, so you'd need at least a four-foot wide section that would be at grade or limited grade, and whether or not you chose to put that in the middle of the street versus on the curbside, we just haven't taken a look at that yet.
I wonder if some other community has, has to face this, so somewhere there's got to be an answer.
The, the new standard speed bumps that we have don't have that abrupt bump in the middle, which I think would be probably an enormous barrier. It would simply be a question of the grade issue. Do we know what the grade is?
Well, I think any of our speed, well, it would be way beyond what the ADA requires in terms of ramps and accessible issues, which is, you know, a 2% horizontal grade and a up to 8% vertical grade, if I'm not mistaken. Alana probably knows better. But it's way beyond what our speed bumps are, which would be, even a speed table would be, basically to get up to that level of four-inch, four-inch raise over a very short distance, we wouldn't be able to meet that. It's not a grade requirement.
Okay.
The other comment that I, that I had is that I can really see how this neighborhood has got to face a lot of cut-through traffic, and, and I actually have been over there visiting friends and looked at buying a house at the corner of Poplar and Fourth, I guess it is, and stood out there in the afternoon and watched the traffic, just go, "Vroom, vroom," fly on by. And I don't, what I wanted to ask, I guess Nellie might know the answer to this question, and maybe Bruce does, if the community ever considered actually blocking the street for emergency vehicles only right where Orchard crosses at, at Sligo, or even where the, where Poplar comes out just above the, the school that's there?
Bruce? Do you know the answer to that?
I feel fairly comfortable in saying I've never heard anybody propose that.
I mean, this brings up, if I can just say so, a reference to an earlier issue Bruce mentioned, which is neighborhood-wide traffic studies, which we've done in some places and which are the vehicle for coming up with things like blocking off streets and one-way streets and that kind of thing. They, they very rarely come up on a piecemeal basis because you really have to look at the entire area. And so I think before something like that came forward, we would have to do something more major. Nellie, have, have you heard of a discussion of anything that, on a blocking off the street?
Yeah, I believe we were talking a few minutes ago outside here amongst ourselves, we were just discussing something like maybe Walnut Head, something in that order.
O'Nerfs?
Yeah, the plants and pots and so on. In some of the areas, we could do that.
Yeah.
Especially some of the narrower streets, that we could really probably do that, and it would probably have that good effect. Some of them, the Orchard Avenue and Fourth, really, we have a really problem there. So with the parking over on the other side and different things going on, yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks. Suzanne, did you have something?
I just wanted to mention that before unification, Prince George's County Park had planned a good traffic analysis, and they put a traffic study in the area and analyzed all the different routes. That's where the no-left turn signs came from and a variety of the changes. I haven't looked at that study for a long time, but it may have addressed some of the other options that, and so it's worth going back and at least looking at that. These, these were problems that were dealt with back then.
Do we have a copy of that study?
Probably in storage. I'm sure seen it before.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not sure that I could lay my hands on it right away. Nevertheless, it certainly, you know, it was a pretty well-done neighborhood traffic study quite some time ago, but addressing the same issues.
If I could make a proposal to the council, I would like to suggest that we move forward with the two speed bump requests, and at the same time, we ask the Public Works Department to take a look at some of the concerns that Councilmember Clay has brought forward about ADA accessibility, to see if there's a way we can accommodate that.
Can I add one more thing to that? Back when we were doing the neighborhood traffic studies, when people requested them, we got some consulting help from time to time. And I guess I'd like to find out again, what, you know, to get a price at least, what it would cost to bring in a consultant if we wanted to do small neighborhood traffic studies because they made a lot of sense, and we were dealing with some of the issues in Doug's ward back then, you know, having the benefit of a study that looked at multiple streets was really useful, and it eliminated this, or I wouldn't say it didn't eliminate the issue, but it led to resolutions that addressed everybody's concerns, concerns at the same time. And this, you know, having this little discussion tonight just made it clear that we probably ought to find out what it costs to bring in a consultant, and when we do things that look like they're going to be substantial, particularly where we know they have potential push traffic over a block or two, then we just ought to be looking at doing some small neighborhood studies. At least they get a price on the consultant for that.
If I can just remind folks that a couple of those neighborhood studies were saucy- If I can just remind folks that a couple of those neighborhood studies were SASC. There was the Manor Circle, SS Carroll, which also included SASC. There was something over in Hodges Heights at Grant and Darwin. There were other ones as well.
Was it Queen Anne and all that stuff then?
Yeah.
Yeah, there were a number of them, and having been part of the volunteer corps that did the SASC one, we kept costs down by having volunteers from the neighborhood do the very labor-intensive pieces of it, i.e. stand out there in the cold counting cars.
Using clipboards and clickers.
Yep, and clicking. And that's why I know that in the year that SASC did it, the, the maximum numbers of cars on Ethan Allen Avenue going in the preferred direction was 1,000 cars an hour, which is, I still find fairly amazing. But in any case, I, I think that's a good idea, and we should probably move forward with that. So, if I'm, is it, the council, the proposal before the council is to move forward to the two speed humps, investigate the ADA issues that Colleen has brought forward, and also look at perhaps costs of hiring a traffic engineer and doing, and enabling people to do the kind of neighborhood studies that we've done in the past.
And, and maybe some thoughts about possibility of needing a little bit of money in the upcoming budget to have a pot available to do this.
Are people, is the council in agreement on that? Okay, that would be the direction to staff. All right, the next item on the agenda is a discussion of the FY07 program, open space allocation. Okay, do we?
Yeah, Suzie and I attended a meeting with Montgomery County and Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission.
And the state of Maryland, folks.
And the state of Maryland, and we are anticipating some largesse from the state in terms of program open space. It's been proposed to be generously funded for fiscal year '07, to the tune of the City Tacoma Park, about $445,500 that may be allocated for us.
To put that in perspective, our usual allocation's around $125,000. So, this is-
Merry Christmas, happy election year.
Yes, there's, there's no question that this was, you know, special-
The timing was not coincidental?
Yes.
This is special allocation.
Christmas Day.
The, the state is particularly interested in what they are defining as green projects, environmental projects. Of course, as is usual with program open space, there's a 25% match for the funds you get. The city would have to be able to ante up 25% of that, which would be a little over $111,000 to access those funds. In general discussions with the representatives there is indication that they would consider a proposal for the gymnasium when we talked amongst ourselves about potential playground renovation, which is often what, what we are doing with program open space funds, or actual purchases of property, which was done with this Sligo Mill and Poplar Mill thing. But we don't have any current programs that are ready to go or underway where we have the potential of that kind of funding to be able to put together towards that. With the exception of the Jackson Boyd Playground, which is something that's been on our program open space list for a while, we're, we're, would like to recommend that we consider funds for the design element of that, which we've previously talked to program open space about the actual renovation, the capital cost of that. So, the proposal you have in front of you now splits that fund's slight, a slight amount to the playground and the rest to the gym, if you, if the council considers going forward with that.
Mark?
I don't have a problem with your allocation as long as we would have the flexibility to spend the money on something else, should we not need the money for the gym either because we get money from other sources?
Yeah, the, the issue-
Or we don't do it at all.
Right, the issue, and this was an interesting discussion at this meeting because there were representatives from a number of municipalities there. The question that was put to us was, is there anyone who would have trouble spending it? And we said yes, because of the match, the $110,000 isn't going to just drop out of the sky. And so, that's a fairly significant issue for us as a community. The advantage of the gymnasium is that there's a match on the table.
You've already spent the match.
No, we don't.
This, this would be the proposal for the money for Washington Methodist Hospital.
Okay, got it.
As, as a, as an independent match to the, to the program open space funds. If we want to have a list of other projects, other than the Jackson Boyd, you know, we would need to come up with that and we would need to allocate, you know, have a sense of how we would go through and allocate the funds for that. The problem that we have is that, I guess because we haven't had that much money and we spend a lot of money on Poplar Mills and whatever, we've not had the kinds of community discussions that are required to have a project ready to go. We, you know, we, we need to start working on that to be ready for future times, but if we were to get the funds, I don't know that we have a, we don't have any comfort level of a list to pursue.
Well, I guess my, we've often changed how we spent money in the past.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm not concerned that you walk in the door with a list of 10 alternatives. All I'm concerned is that, that I don't mind going through this as it is, but knowing that we need to, to look at developing alternatives in the event that this doesn't pan out. I mean, it seems to me that we should know about other money sources pretty soon. We should know about soil conditions and what we're likely to deal with there, and then what the potential cost of this thing's going to be. So, we ought to have a sense of where we're going and if we're going.
I agree, that we're, we're in a little bit of an awkward situation with the timing because the way that the process works is you have to declare your, your official, your annual program, and you can put more stuff on that than you'll actually do, and so we can add some things to that list with, as kind of like Plan B and C and D. But, you know, that's, that, you pretty much need to get that in right away. And so, we're not going to know these other answers before we need to submit our annual program. Doesn't mean we can't go back and do some changing. It was clear from the meeting, they want to do everything they can to spend this money and look good, so I, they're willing to work with us on it. But I, you know, we were as staff kind of perplexed about what we would, what other items we'd put on the list. And the other concept, and was included in, in Daryl's agenda item, is that there are some projects that are on Maryland National Capital Park and Planning land that we've been trying to expedite for some time. It may be that we could put some funds in and not have that 25% match triggered, you know, as part of, as part of a joint project to get one of these other kinds of projects underway. That's, that was the best I could come up with, the Plan C or D. And so, I don't-
I mean, the irony is if people spring that much money on you at the last minute and say, Owen, you've got to have the whole plan, the whole thing arranged for by next week, it, you know.
Well, and, and you know, and it is one of the difficulties that we face because obviously, we don't want to just come into a neighborhood and say, we've got money, we want to do this in your neighborhood, and not have had the preparation work with the community that's, that's really needed.
So, it, part of the discussion that we need to have is the, what's going to come up on the next item. But, and I do understand the difficulty of coming up with other projects without ever having any discussions of them, and I have to say, my, my initial reaction to helping the county fund some of their own stuff is not totally positive. But, go ahead.
Thank you. You can leave that with a but.
Sure.
One of the projects that has been on the drawing board, and I think there even been some plans, but has moved kind of lethargically is the, some of the, the work in the Tacoma Woods Valley behind the Ed Wilhelm Field or Park Ritchie Apartments. And I wonder if maybe a little bit of money couldn't be put towards the rain gardens that was talked about there, or the wetlands project that was talked about there. Again, I think that, that there were some plans and some budgets already worked up with some of that.
And that's again a park and planning project.
That would be us contributing to a park and planning project. And, and there are, you know, there are a number of these projects that have some merit that we would like, obviously, to see move forward.
There's also the, the playground's been discussed on Orchard Avenue.
Right.
Again, a park and planning piece of property.
There's the Cherry Connector, and there's, you know, so there's, there's some fairly significant projects out there that are important that Park and Planning has committed to, but there are out ears.
Yeah, there are many, many out ears. Well-
It's just a bad precedent to be paying for, we can't continue to argue that they should pay for stuff and then, and then pay for it.
Give them money.
Yeah.
I agree. That's why we put forward, we put forward.
I'm happy where you are.
Is the council basically comfortable moving forward at this point with, with this request? I mean, you can, it's the Tacoma Park, the, the Jackson Boyd Playground for $10,000 and $435,570, excuse me, $575 for the gym. Contingent on obviously the discussion we're going to have at the next item.
So, we'll come back.
Okay, I'm, I'm seeing yeses that people are comfortable moving forward.
And also contingent on future discussion.
Right, obviously, future discussions and, you know, various things that could happen at some point. Thank you. The council's going to take a short recess, and we'll come back for the remaining items on the agenda. We began to get into a little bit earlier, and I said I would put on the future agenda for a complete discussion, a discussion of where we go from here essentially on the gym. The liaison committee that the council appointed has come to us with a proposal. No, no, do you want to sit up here at the table, Howard? The liaison committee has come to us with a proposal. And you have that proposal sort of summarized in your blue sheet there. And the council needs to decide how we want to move forward on this process. We have a proposal on the table to take next steps, including moving forward on obtaining a consulting architect or someone similar to do the feasibility study, looking at these issues that the committee has put in front of us. That's what, that's the proposal, the proposal that we have on the table. Are there any thoughts?
I think that's a great idea. We should go forward and get the architects to put together the feasibility studies so we know what we're talking about. Would that give us cost estimates as well, or we have to?
So basically, my understanding is what the committee brought forward with us is the cost estimates are sort of the critical piece of that. There's feasibility in the sense of what fits and that kind of thing, but I understand that you're also looking for cost estimates.
Exactly, Colleen, the bottom line cost estimates.
Wasn't there like a high, middle, low?
We suggested a high, middle, low.
So then we'd have something to talk about and discuss.
Great, okay. And then Mark, if that's fair.
We have, I think we need to be sure we, not wanting to repeat our previous experience, we need to have two separate pieces of information. Because when I was talking to one of the people who's been involved in this, who's a builder, his suggestion was to take the engineering study and the utility location study, and that, the soil engineering study. And that needs to go to an engineer who can make a determination about what kind of foundation has to go onto that thing. And then that information should then go to an architect to design around. But his sense was there are two distinct people in terms of somebody's got to evaluate what this, what that soil means in terms of support and then the architecture to design. I don't want to repeat what happened that front. And I think that's absolutely a critical element this time. So before we sign on with an architect, I'd just like to be sure that that's the appropriate person to do, whether we should only do an architect or whether we need to do an engineer and an architect, and whether it needs to be sequential rather than parallel. I just want to be sure that we get an answer to that question. Maybe we need to ask some people in the building trades, some of the, you know, like I think of Mike Pennas and Jim O'Brien, people who actually do these kind of things and say, what should we do now?
Well, one thing that we could do, and apologies, Terry, if I can just follow on what Mark said. I assume if we wanted to put out an RFP, we could specify in the RFP that we wanted these engineering services done, and we wanted these architectural services done, and then let them work it out together. I don't know that our doing, contracting with one and then the other would necessarily be the most efficient thing to do. Maybe we could ask them to join together and make joint proposals.
I'm not particularly know, as long as we know that we need both those answers.
If I can just make a comment, you know, my understanding, and I correct me if I'm wrong, is there are certain issues that are really not addressed until you get into a full-blown design. So, I mean, I think we need to be clear on what we're talking about doing, is this more of a kind of a conceptual study, and in my experience, what you get out of that is you kind of provide certain parameters. Obviously, I think some of the constraints on this site will certainly drive up the cost of the project. And I think that information that we're gleaning from the technical studies would be important to share, but some of the specific design elements that have come up would probably be down the road, if you will, when you make the decision to go forward, because that could be a very expensive process. I think in terms of the issue of how you partner, typically what happens on any kind of project, even when you're doing a full-blown design of a building, is you generally have an architect be the primary person, they subcontract out part of their work to engineering firms, and that's pretty much the way it works with any type of project. So I would agree that I don't think you want to be hiring separate people, what you want to make sure is that whoever the architect firm, architectural firm is that we would hire, that they have a working relationship with an engineering firm, and we should probably be evaluating the credentials of the engineering firm as part of the proposal process, just as we would the architectural firm.
If I can also cut in front of Terry.
It's very small.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
You've been doing all the hard work there.
The committee feels there are two, maybe three, large variables, just as Mark said, the location, the utility lines, whether they have to be moved, the foundation, the stability of the soil, and whether there has to be major excavation as in phase one. And then probably parking is another big variable.
Terry?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I think the ground's been covered. We certainly need the study and the engineering perspective, though, to determine what we have, you know, where we can build and kind of what the limitations are there. The short list of things that the liaison committee has included as key components, I think, though, we might want to revisit after knowing what the engineering limitations are and what the space limitations are, because I certainly know that, you know, the shower facility is something that has been a key desire in the past. And the other thing, I hear from a lot of community members, that's still an expectation when they think of gymnasium as a weight room. And although, you know, under certain limitations that we have, space and money-wise, that may not be feasible, but if we don't have the severe limitations on some of the utility lines and things like that, if that isn't going to cost us as much, we may want to revisit that part of what the architect comes back with some of the options in a gymnasium, because I think a weight room would be...
I think a weight room and showers could be included in the high-end option.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that we have talked about in the past is to do sort of different alternatives, do complete alternatives, and then maybe if we can do certain things as add-ons. For example, a weight room, because if we ended up with, as I'm understanding it, the biggest different, the biggest thing that's going to make an impact on cost is going to be the size of the gym. And so getting, as the committee suggested, getting a range of sizes, a medium, a bigger or smaller, and a middle range of sizes. But then, rather than sort of saying, okay, the bigger size includes a weight room and showers, and the middle one and the small one do or don't, maybe to sort of price them out separately, so we know, for example, what proportion of the cost of the bigger one is the showers and/or the weight room, rather than sort of saying, oh, boy, this big one is very expensive, how much of that is the size, and how much of that is these other things that are added in? So you know, so you could actually, conceptually, pull it together, you say, boy, we like the bigger space, but we think that given what we're working with, we can't or can't afford these other things, so you can make independent decisions, makes some sense to me.
Right, I agree with especially the showers and the weight room, see those as options. But the thing, I'm not so sure that we're ready to go out to an architectural engineer this time, or an architect at this time, and we need the engineering study first, is we may be talking about three alternatives, a small gym, a small gym, and a small gym. You know, it's going to depend on what we get back on the soil samples and the utility locations.
Maybe what I'm hearing from the council is not so much a question of the process that we use in hiring, but a question of the process that we ask for the entities to report back to us. In other words, there's a two-stage reporting process, first to report back to the council in terms of whatever engineering findings there are in terms of the underground. I guess that would be fairly simple. Does it make sense to go underground, you have to excavate anyway or not? And then maybe we are looking at that, and then it comes back in a second phase as to, okay, given whatever the answer is on that, this is what you could do. I mean, does that make sense? Is that sort of consistent with what kinds of processes we're thinking about? I think so.
Yeah, the kind of limitations and opportunities, and then given that, if we can narrow it down some, it makes the options for the pieces that might go in it a little easier.
An architectural consultant could give us, I mean, not ask us to design the thing at this point, but to say, given the available land, and now what I know about the soils, like your building could look like this, this, or this, you're still, we're only talking about basically a big empty box with or without showers and with or without a weight room. So this is not going to ever become, I don't imagine this thing being loaded up with other things, so it should stay relatively simple. It better stay relatively simple.
Colleen?
I also want to consider, as we're talking about the decision on how it's constructed, what the operating costs are. And, you know, the shower facilities can make a big difference in operating costs, especially with utility costs going up. It makes a difference in how long you have to staff something after an event, as everyone processes through the showers and out, versus, you know, packing up and going home and shower.
It's a huge liability.
And then the variety of activities that are available, whether you added a weight room or those kinds of things, and how you staff those. And so it might be useful to simultaneously have our recreation department evaluate and do some, give us some kind of a sense of what the ongoing operating costs would be, given the different configurations. Yep. I believe some of the work had been done in the past, I can speak to Ms. Hayden about that, but obviously there, at one time, the city had developed a concept for the gym, and I know that was a question some other members of the council had asked, Councilmember Clay. So I will talk to Ms. Hayden and see what information has already been generated in the past to make sure that gets distributed to the council.
I would like to ask her to look at it again, because frankly, our experience with what we were told things were going to be to do this is worn out differently. And we just simply cannot rely on anything that was done before as the basis for what we do next.
I'm not saying she can't update it, Councilmember Allen, I'm just saying there has been some work, so we're not starting from scratch. The other thing I just wanted to clarify, because someone had, I'm not sure who talked about it, but the design of the building, what you really get at this phase, I would say is really not a design. If you've ever seen the results of a feasibility study, I just want to make sure that we're all clear on kind of what you're going to get. You have certain parameters that I think the liaison committee has laid out in terms of kind of a minimum size of the gym, bleacher seating that's going to add square footage, and which you will typically see, looking at the constraints of the site and putting in some allowances, if there's utility relocations or soil excavation, things of that nature. What they're really going to provide you is not necessarily a picture of the building, if you will, but looking at what are the per-square-foot construction costs associated with those parameters and giving you some ranges. So someone had mentioned the word "design," and I guess I just want to make sure that no one thinks there's really a picture, per se, that's going to arise out of this process, it's actually per-square-foot construction cost and what that's going to translate into overall project costs.
I meant "design" in terms of the basic layout and footprint of the building. They should give us options, though, for like brick facade versus non-brick facade. And I'd also like them to look at, one possibly struck me environmentally, is if this is basically with lots of steel beams, and, you know, if we do less supporting walls, is this an opportunity, for example, to look at straw bale for the walls? I mean, that's environmentally sound, interesting.
I mentioned that last time, I never would laugh.
I'd like to, I'd like to know, I mean, is that, is that an option? What are the costs on that? Does it make sense to do something on that scale? If it's not being asked to carry and load the building, you know, would that work?
Chris?
If I can just throw in a quick something on the question that I think came up before in terms of looking at the options of what things add, and I just want to point out that I, in my experience, after you talk about volume of a building, the next, biggest piece that adds to your costs is as soon as you start adding plumbing. Because once you Because once you add plumbing for things like showers, you're adding all of the other pieces that follow on to it, like ceramic tile work, you know, the electricities, the doors, the, all of the fixtures that go with that. So, once you start saying plumbing, it drags a whole nation in behind it.
But there have to be restrooms, I understand, so there's going to be some plumbing in the building.
Sure, sure, but any incremental increase in plumbing drags a whole cast of characters through the door.
You know, I'm not a big fan of having showers in this building, and I think, you know, all the adults play in gyms around here with no showers, all the kids play in the gyms with no showers, it's just a normal part of what it's like to go to a gym.
Growing up in stinky America.
It is crazy. It just adds a really substantial, you know, it could add a really substantial part to this project, and I'm not interested. I mean, even if we wind up with $1.5 million, doesn't mean we should spend $1.5 million. We shouldn't just say, how much can we spend, just because there's money to spend.
Do you object to costing out the showers, though?
I don't object to costing them out, but I don't want to get into a mentality where we just decide that if somebody gives us all this money, we'll spend all this money.
Okay, understand, understand.
Here's a question. What are the costs of determining the costs? And in what phase will that take place? And how do we pay for it?
At this point, I think the direction that I need is whether or not the council wants staff to move forward with the issuance of an RFP. Obviously, the only cost associated with that would be our time, which, you know, certainly the next few weeks are going to be pretty much dedicated to the budget, so as Howard and I talked about, we're probably looking at sometime in April, and trying to get this out on the street, there'd be some mailing cost, perhaps a newspaper advertisement. That's really the only commitment, I think, at this time, because certainly this is going to be in excess of $10,000, that contract would have to come back before the council, and you can make a decision at that time whether you wish to proceed.
And I assume that the council is comfortable with making the basis of the RFP, or should I phrase this as a question to the council, comfortable with making the basis of the RFP, the things that are sort of summarized on the blue sheet? With the notation that we would also include as options, the shower and the weight room, and that we would go on a three-size gym, I forget whether the smallest one or the middle one is the Piney Branch Elementary, is that the smallest?
Yeah, that would be the smallest. We numbered them, two, three, and four. Piney Branch would be a two, the Shore Middle School would be a three, and a high school gym, the old Blair High School gym would be a four, let's say. They're all, all could plausibly fit there, depending about how things...
The Blair Gym could fit there?
The old Blair Gym, not the new Blair Gym.
The old Blair Gym, with the bleachers on both sides? Or the bleachers, I mean...
Presumably, that's what we're trying to find, so...
Something, well, remember that the design that we do have, drawn by our first architect, is a pretty big gym.
But I also remember, when we went out and walked it off, and actually marked out where the pretty big gym was, there was like no road, and we were talking about taking room from the school in order to put a driveway, to put the road on school property, I mean, there's got to be some kind of sensible constraints to this.
I think what we're looking for here is what size gym fits, given the constraints, including the utility and all that stuff that we will have, that's pretty much going to drive it, saying, give me one, two, and three sizes, may not be the real question that needs to be answered.
I agree. We, as a committee, accept the idea that the gym has to fit within the geographic constraints, we're not going to go on the school property, not going to interfere in any way with the school functions, nor with the underground, and not hurt the big silver maple out there. So those constraints are what they are.
If I could just follow up on that briefly, the notion, I mean, there's been some discussion of moving the utilities. It might be worth finding out, I'm disinclined to do that, disinclined to do that, but if it turns out, from, I'm not very good at reading these plans, but the plans, the stuff we got from the engineers showed that the utilities are fairly close to the building, they're on the interior side of the right-of-way, closer than we thought they might be. And so, if that's the case, then we may have to look at, as an option, what it would cost to move the utilities in order to get a space of any size in there. And so, I guess, I would not want to preclude at the front end, getting cost estimates on that. I'm disinclined to do that at this point, but I think it's something that we should be in a good position to consider by having enough information to make a reasonable decision on that. And so, I think that may mean that if it turns out that you can't really do a reasonable-sized gym, we need to know how much that would cost to do it. So I would not say, whatever it is has to fit inside the utilities, I would say, either it fits inside the utilities, but you have to tell us how it would cost to move them.
Terry?
I agree with that, Mayor Porter. And also, one of the items that's not bulleted, but is in this list, is of utmost importance, and that is the parking, not just various options to increase parking, but options to increase parking, to provide the parking that's necessary for the site. Right. It's in the list, it's just not in one of the bullet items, so it doesn't stand out, I want to make sure that's covered.
If I remember, and maybe I don't remember from the last time we talked about this, but to some degree, the parking is almost something that we can pursue independently. Obviously, if there needs to be work, if there needs to be excavation under the gym, then it makes sense to put parking there, and we can talk about the possibility of parking in the area behind. There's also some things that we can do independently, such as on Maple Avenue, that I think we should pursue, we shouldn't wait on this to pursue, I guess is what I'm saying. People, maybe if I could, maybe I should ask Barb, my assumption is that we are pursuing the parking on Maple Avenue issue.
We have retained a consultant to work with us on that issue, they've done some preliminary work, but there's still some work to be done.
Right.
Yeah, we are pursuing that.
So, I very much agree with Terry that parking needs to be part of our consideration of how we move forward. I don't know that we would necessarily get all of the parking questions that we need as a result of this RFP, because there may be parking options outside of what is included in the RFP, maybe that's a clearer way to say it.
I understand what you're saying, I'm less optimistic of what we're going to find outside of this, so I do want to make sure that we look at what we can do here, and it may turn out that a solution onsite is more attractive to the community than along the street.
Yeah, okay.
Terry?
A couple of things. One, I don't want us to lose the contact with the public that we made sure we had the last time we were moving forward with things, and I think we should stay in very close touch, either with articles in the newsletter, or some form of outreach. And then, as the council sees what we've succeeded in obtaining from other levels of government, we can publicize that, and along with the cost figures that we obtained, and get people's involvement at that time about how to complete the project. I also want to find out when the appropriate time would be to get cost information on various other things besides the gym that we have committed to the community to do, such as the facade for the library. I believe that there are some options that, I know some council members have asked about, like having the plaza, covering the parking, the lower parking deck. There are some others.
The council has already some estimates of costs for those items, I think we have received costs, I would have to go back and look and see what the timeframe was on them.
They're too old to be reliable.
Yeah, I can probably address one of Councilmember Austin Lane's questions. I think when we were looking to go out for the bond, which I believe was shortly after I started, so I think that was like the fall of 2004, we had asked the contractor for the first phase of the project, James F. Knott Construction, to give us what I would refer to as budgetary estimates. Those were really not firm prices for either the gym or the library facade, it was basically their best guess, kind of, you know, based on the knowledge of the site and construction. My recollection was that the cost of the library facade was in the range of $800,000 to $900,000. Once again, you're really not going to know what that item's going to cost until you basically take it out to bid. In regard to kind of constructing the plazas, that is not something that we've ever even gotten budgetary estimates from someone for. I don't think we could go back and rely on what had been bid originally, and one of the things that I think we would probably need to look at in terms of the pedestrian bridge, and how that structure was eventually built and the loads, if you're going to try to connect anything on to that, I'm not saying there's a problem there, I'm just saying, I don't know, but that would be something that the design of that pedestrian bridge, once it no longer had something connecting to it, may not be able to bear that load. So it may not just be a matter of what you can add on to it, but if there's any kind of retrofitting, that would have to be done. Once again, that would really require the services of an engineer, probably, and some other kind of technical consultant, I certainly wouldn't feel comfortable, you know, coming up with a number without that kind of professional expertise.
But what we were told, actually, there was no independent number for the plaza, because it was originally part of the design that was bid on, it was part of what disappeared in value engineering. But what we were told was that the supports for the plaza were in place in the building, and if we ever chose to put a plaza on, in there to cover over the rest of the space, we could do so without having to re-engineer in the supports. I certainly hope that's the case. So it might, but since we never actually got a number separately for the plaza, I think then, the sort of the ballpark we were given was something on the order of half-a-million, maybe other council members considered. Yeah, something in that, but I'm not sure how accurate that would be. I guess, so the question is, if I'm understanding, Joy, are you sort of suggesting that we get up-to-date estimates on these other items?
I think so. There are some things that the council has discussed that rank, like skylights and elevators, and we figured out how to square them away, or to relinquish the dream, and, but there are some other things that we really haven't talked about in depth, and as we are moving forward with obtaining promises of funding, and then talking with the public about how to finish this project, I think it's really important for us to have solid numbers on all of these items, so that we can get people's input at that time.
If I can suggest that a first step toward that might be to ask the question of those who would know, what, if any, changes might have taken place in the design of the as-built on something like the question about the bridge, whether anything, in any of these potential future projects, whether there have been changes that would necessitate adjustments to what's currently there that are different than the expectations we were left with at the value engineering point, that we could just kind of come in and add a piece here, add a piece there, it was already taken care of. I think if we get that answer first, it might be much easier to get reliable numbers for any of those pieces that would go on, so that we don't get surprised and say, oh, well, just give us the price to put it on, they do that, and then we come back with, oops, there's other steps that have to be taken.
Let me, since what we're trying to come to a conclusion here on is a sense of what, whether we go forward, whether the next step in terms of the gym is to move forward to get this information, and I'm hearing the council say, yes, we do want to move forward, that is the next step, and now the question is sort of, what is included in that RFP, if you will? And what I've heard so far, and please let me know if I didn't hear correctly, is that we want to have some, at least, three gyms of various sizes, that we want to get costing on showers and weight rooms as options, that we want to, in doing the sizes on the gyms, if it turns out that we can't get the size that we want without going outside the parameters of where the utilities are, that we would then need to know how much the utilities cost, moving the utilities would cost. And I guess the question is, is the council suggesting that we also include in this RFP costing out of some of those other alternatives, or not? Is that, was that what you were basically mentioning?
I was asking when the right time for that would be, so...
Okay, so that poses a question, should that be done as part of this, or not?
I don't know.
I'm hesitant to broaden this to that point at this time.
I'd rather do it sequentially and finish the gym off, and then if we have to revisit the other stuff, revisit the other stuff, because the money we're primarily getting is money targeted toward the gym anyway, anything we did with the rest of it is going to mean, I mean honestly, either coming into another election year when somebody has money they're going to hand out, or bonding, because it's not going to be able to get out of operating capital. So I think we should be cautious about the second stage. I do have a question about how many proposals we get, because looking at the drawings, they look, actually, that utility line looks about where we thought it was, and...
Oh, it's close to the right of it.
No, it's about, it's between 58 and 60 feet from the building, and you can't build an effective gym if it's less than that. I mean, it's, so you need something that fits inside, and then your option, if you want something wider with bleachers, is to move the utilities. So I don't know if you need three things, I think you need basically something without bleachers that goes, that lets you stay inside that utility line. You're not following me. She's calling.
I am, I just, my experience campaigning is that you get to about 70% support for the gym, like really strong 70% support for the gym, when the gym is big enough for adults to play, and when you include bleachers. You lose people when you drop off.
I'm not suggesting it not be big enough for adults to play, because I want to play in the gym. So, it would behoove me to have a gym big enough, I'm just saying, 60 feet wide is actually a decent, I think it was the size of a middle school gym, which is, which was a proper-sized gym. There was potential for bleachers in one part of it, but maybe not the whole length of it. If you, I wish I had a picture here, if you were thinking about where the utility line is, the utility line is about, I want to say six, eight feet maybe into the street, I remember it was about at the left tail, at the outside tail of a car that was parked along the curb.
And then started passing through the cars?
Right.
Because you got farther toward Maple Avenue.
Right, so that's a 60-foot-wide gym to that point, which is sort of the minimal thing, and toward Maple Avenue, you actually had room for bleachers, but you'd have to have a building instead of being a perfect rectangle that was wider at the front, and then tapered back at the end. If you go beyond 60 feet, you've got to move the utility lines, and also picture it, beyond 60 feet wide, you have to move the utility lines, now you're not just at the rear fender of the car, you're now approaching the middle of the street, and if you go much beyond the middle of the street, then you're forcing that whole road to have to be moved onto school property, and that may not be something we want to do. So, I'm not sure we ought to tell the architect, give us three designs that are, you know, 60, 62 feet, and 64 feet, but we ought to say, give us a couple of designs.
Mark, I think Barb did a very good job of summarizing earlier, and we're now really looking at designs, and maybe that was...
A footprint, whatever.
We think we're looking at per-footage costs.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things when you, just to remind everyone, and maybe it's because I've spent so much time of my tenure here on this project, is it's not just a matter of where the utility lines are, that is a high-voltage duct bank, there are generally accepted clearances, I know some have said to me, could you waive those? Those clearances are there for a reason, it's so that someone can access the duct bank, and for safety reasons, so, and I can't recall off the top of my head what those are, I did have a discussion with someone about that, but that in and of itself may create a constraint. I think when Howard and I were talking about this last week, I think we just need to give the information to whomever we hire, let them evaluate, you know, looking at the soil conditions and the utilities, and really tell us, looking at those factors, probably more geared towards the utility lines, what is even feasible, if anything, and try not to drive this process too much by presupposing what's going to come out of it. Someone may look at this, and by the time you talk to Pepco, because it is going to have to be someone authorized by them to move this because of the voltage. The ballpark estimate that James F. Knott had given us when we talked about this...
The ballpark estimate that James F. Knod had given us when we talked about this a year and a half ago was their best guess is moving that duck bank's probably a four-hundred-thousand-dollar expense. And my suspicion is that's going to maybe be difficult to avoid. But I think if we just give the information to someone, allow them to look at it, probably the first question that they're going to really answer is, is it even feasible to construct a functional gym of any type within those clearances and with where those lines are? And I think once that question gets answered by someone who's got a lot better skills than I do, it's then going to become a matter, if you have to move it anyway, looking at the school property, the driveways, what are then the options? That's kind of how I would see the process unfolding with whomever we hire.
Right, and you're exactly saying that it's more than just square footage than the cost per square foot. It's, you know, what is the footprint, is it feasible?
Yeah, I mean, I think what's probably, and it's true of any, I think, developed site, and we all know that there's lots of utility lines running along Grant Avenue, especially if you looked at that map, it's always more expensive to build anything on a developed site versus a flat piece of land. On the other hand, you're not paying for property either, so that's kind of the trade-off. I think based on our experience with other areas of the site, I think the borings are certainly going to be useful. We're looking at doing eight, kind of building off the work that had been done before. My suspicion is going to be that in addition to just the general square footage cost, the fact that we do have utilities in the area that may or may not have to be relocated, and that we probably, I think, are going to have a pretty strong indication there's soil problems, that will probably drive some of the square footage construction cost beyond. And that's what I'm hoping someone can look at the information that we're giving them and take those factors into consideration, and give us a very reasonable idea of what this would cost to build on the site.
I guess I should have said, this is square footage cost plus the big variables, the activation.
It sounds to me like this might make it even more essential to do, to ask for a two-phase report back to us. And the first phase would be the question that Bob framed, is it even feasible for us to try and build something within the utilities and take a look at what that might be, but also connect that to the underground issues? Because both of those are going to have significant impacts on the cost. And then sort of look at that as part one, and then based on what we think about part one, go forward to part two, which is, what could you do? Would that make sense, or does it make sense to look at it all together?
It's all, it's all the same question.
Okay.
Could you, in the process, I know that Park and Planning was talking about renovations to the circle, and moving the circle, and there's a good chance that the duck bank that bites us is the duck bank that bites them. And that if they're going to do the renovations to the circle, could we get them, since they're going to have to do the duck bank, can we do this all at once? So that we're not doing the thing twice, and maybe since, you know, the major cost is the opening up and everything else, our cost is incremental. It doesn't make any sense for them to do it and then for us to pay separately to do it a second time. So I'd love to see if we can engage them, kind of probably subtly ask them what they're going to have to do about the duck bank, and then see if they'll just extend their work down to where we need to move from.
Or maybe at least join with them and do it, do one moving at half of the total cost, rather than two separate movings at two separate costs.
I was going to try to get them just to agree with it.
I'm not opposed to that.
Okay, if I'm understanding where we are, the council is agreed that the next step on the gym is to move forward and get some of this information and some of the cost estimates. We're talking about looking at engineering work as well as conceptual design work. We want to make sure that we find out what's feasible within the utility lines, if that doesn't, as well as what it would cost us and what we would get if we went outside. We want to make sure that we have cost estimates as alternatives for showers and weight room, and that's what I've got so far. And I guess the final thing would be, I would concur with Joy that I think putting information on where we are in the newsletter, letting people know that we're preparing this RFP, if there's some issues or concerns that haven't been raised to us so far, that those get raised to us before the final decision on the RFP. And that, since the RFP's probably not going to be going out until later anyway, and that we sort of make sure that people are all up to date on where the council is. Is there anything in addition that we should put, Joy?
Just to make sure that since we're not going out right now for information on these other commitments, that the city manager come back to us at an appropriate time before we've decided how much is needed to complete the project. I would like to get the public's input before then and make sure that we're not dragging this out over, well, I mean, it probably would never get done, so. If it's an option that people want us to pursue, then I'd like to have the information that they need to advise us of their opinion. One thing that came up on the library was the walkway problem, and I don't know if this would be the appropriate time to get a bid for that access issue, where people are having trouble getting over the wall. Also, the library roof. And then I think the rear facade of the building is something that's kind of piecemeal right now, and I don't know if, you know, as people have seen things develop, if that's something that they want the council to finish off or leave as is. So those are all of the things that I've heard people talk about and want to see addressed, and I'd like to hear kind of what the majority opinion is.
I think it would probably be possible for the city manager to bring us what we have so far on those items. I don't know if we've got information on all of them. Perhaps the city manager could remind me, but I thought that the issue with the walkway around the library was not a cost issue or a building issue, it was the fact that, in terms of design work, that there's not a way to design that.
Yeah, the biggest obstacle, I know that Darrell Brithwaite has also talked to John Salmon, an architect in the community, and she met with him and has kind of kicked around some of the various ideas in terms of, I guess, the flood wall, if you will, being a barrier if someone doesn't want to walk on the sidewalks. The biggest obstacle is really not the approach, if you will, to the flood wall coming off of Philadelphia, it's the fact that any kind of system coming down on the interior of the flood wall, if you will, would probably, in order to not have it be so steep that someone's, you know, in danger of hurting themselves coming down the other side, is that it would just narrow the walkway so much that it would start presenting some challenges for accessibility. It would essentially narrow that walkway effectively. And when she had met with Mr. Salmon, that was really more the issue, not how you approached the flood wall, but how you came down from it and not unduly narrowing that walkway. And at least in her conversations with him, as well as just the ideas that staff has kicked around, I'm not sure how you ever avoid that problem, because you'd have to have a descent, if you will, from coming over the flood wall, and that's just going to narrow that walkway too much, and it's going to present some accessibility challenges.
I was just thinking perhaps if Mr. Salmon would be agreeable that he and Councilmember Austin Lane could walk that area?
Sure.
And see if there's something that hasn't been thought of up to this point. He has been, and I have to say, he has been very agreeable, and he has given, he's not only an architect, he's an architect who specializes in accessibility issues. And he has donated a great deal of his time in assisting us with the community center. And he also gave Bruce and myself a tour of his home, which is a home that's designed to be completely accessible, but lovely. I mean, it doesn't look different than most people's homes, and it's, you know, he's got an expertise that I'm sure makes him much more expensive than most architects, but he's donated a great deal of his time to help us out.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Just while I'm still on the air. He's also put up a challenge grant of ten thousand dollars for the elevator, in the sense, anybody out there in TV land who wants to match all of part of that, get in touch with the Tacoma Foundation. The best way to do that is through the website, tacomafoundation.org. Why, Joy?
And I don't think I'm speaking out of school in saying this, but at the Long Branch-Slaggo meeting that Colleen and I attended, the annual potluck and meeting that they attended, they did discuss making contributions to a number of organizations, and the Tacoma Foundation was one of them. Not of ten thousand dollars, however.
Always ask big for big.
I thought the elevator was something we had figured out a way to ask the current contractor to complete. Yeah, we are still in the process of gathering information. I had a meeting earlier today with TRG Construction. There were some additional questions that I posed, so I hope I'll have some information for you in the next week or so. And funding for that was found within the... No, this is not a funded aspect of the project at this time.
Okay, where was summarized before, is the council comfortable, clear we're going forward, how we're going forward with this? I'm seeing yeses, okay. I think we are moving forward with that. Okay, and the, the final item on the agenda is a legislative update. And Suzanne, who has been waiting patiently, is going to give us an update on where we are with. You know, I have been going up to the state legislature for I can't tell you how many years, and I can't think of any year where the number of things that we have been actively involved in in front of the state legislature at one time is as high as it is this year. We probably have more things that we're not just following, but that we're engaged in than I can ever remember.
It has been very lively this year. Tried to go briefly through my legislative update. I prepared this information pretty much today, in this past weekend, because it has been very busy, and a lot of these items have had activity in the later part of last week and over the weekend. The first is the community center bond bills, yes, on Saturday. It was, the nickname is the annual begathon in Annapolis. We went to Annapolis to advocate for bond bill funding for the community center gym. And the request is for a million dollars. I don't think there's an expectation that we actually get that, but that's been our request. I think we will get funding from the bond bills this year, but we will not know that for several weeks. Kathy Porter and I attended on behalf of this item. You know, I really wish we would have had some more folks being able to attend. I urge people to contact their legislators and say that this is an important bond bill. Also, in Annapolis on Saturday, I don't know, there were several hundred bond bills being heard on Saturday, so it was a zoo. But we were there with historic Tacoma folks, there were folks from Casa of Maryland, there were folks for the improvements at the Blair Field for Thunderbolts, and it moved quickly, but it was a long day. I did include in the information I handed out, the brochure that we prepared for the gym.
Our nice little glossy presentation, which is...
And I will tell you that I really miss Patrick Rittenhouse, who works in our communications staff. I unfortunately had an automobile accident.
Yeah, we heard about that.
So we've been putting together the information. He's taught me some important things, but it was still really hard for me, and I can't wait till he's back. I do think that we had a good reception, but it was one thing after the other.
And I would point out that the importance of something like this, we get like two or three minutes, and we are one of, as Susie said, hundreds of people that they're hearing from that day. And depending on how early we get to them, they may or may not even remember that we were there. But this piece of paper they get at their desks, and they get a chance to hang on to it, and they can look at it and go, oh, yes, Tacoma Park, the gym, yes, I remember that. So these things are very important.
And it was primarily visual, because what they're doing is flipping through it while you're there for your two-minute...
Right, that's exactly what they do.
...presentation. The second thing I wanted to bring up, we got an email, you probably will have received an email from Julia Miller. I believe she's from one of the Chevy Chases, town of Chevy Chase, related to a bill that they had proposed and we have testified in favor of, which is a way to kind of deal with mansionization that they're facing, but it's a way to have a little bit more control over the massing of buildings in our community. And they wrote today that there will be a public hearing about this item on this Thursday at 4:30 p.m., and are urging people to attend or to send letters, especially to Senator Rubin, concerning this. And so in your package is the email from Julia Miller on that. And I do urge you to support it, I think it would be a really helpful step. It allows us to do a couple things, have a little bit more control over the amount of development on a lot that we normally have. And that ends up being important. I can think of a couple of properties in Tacoma Park that have already overbuilt, that, you know, had to be cut down, or they tried other tricks to make it work. It really is out of place, and it makes a community feel uncomfortable when you have that situation. The next thing I'd like to report on...
Can I just, have we ever done a resolution specifically on this issue? I mean, I know we've talked about it...
No, but it's very similar to a lot of our issues related to having site plan control and...
Yes, and I'm sure...
But no, I don't think we've done one that was specifically to this, certainly not specifically to this one.
Would it be helpful to do that? We can't make it in front of, before the hearing on Thursday, but would it be helpful?
It's a voting session on Thursday.
Oh.
It's a public hearing followed by a voting session, so.
Okay, all right.
We are on record with a letter that I reported earlier.
The council has taken up site plan-related issues on a number of occasions, and I would agree with you, that falls within what we've done in the past. I was just thinking of whether it would be helpful to have something specifically addressed to that, but it doesn't sound like we have time.
I don't think we have time. We certainly have also talked a good amount about lot coverage as an issue in Tacoma Park. The next items have to do with condominium conversion bills. The bill that we had particularly advocated for, House Bill 792, which was sponsored by Senator Grossvile, was withdrawn after two tie votes killed it in the Montgomery County delegation, that was a hard fought item. I think that, I think it ended in an unfortunate situation, but one of the things that I do think happened is that many people were enlightened about the issue in the process, and I think that there's going to be a lot more interest from the other members on making adjustments to their bills to deal with some of the issues that were raised. I do have a meeting with Elizabeth Davidson this Friday to discuss a little bit more about her concern of these items. The Senate Bill 815 that was supported by Montgomery County is moving forward with the amendments that were suggested by the county and that we specifically endorsed. One of the bills that I think is very important is House Bill 1500, sponsored by Delegate Sheila Hickson, which is up for a hearing this Thursday as well at 1:00 p.m. This bill does two important things. One is it changes the three-year extended tenancy to five-year extended tenancy. And it provides an opportunity for local jurisdiction to offer tax breaks to developers for a larger number of rental units in a converted building. Doesn't say you have to do it, it doesn't prescribe how to do that, but it does give some flexibility to a jurisdiction to provide some carrot as part of the discussion on condominium conversion. And these provisions were at the request of some citizens at Tacoma Park, called Sheila Hickson, so I appreciate their tenacity in trying to get something else moving there. So some support, I think, of Sheila Hickson's bill would be appreciated. And as I mentioned the last time I was here, Senator Frosch's bill, which changed the definition of persons with disabilities, has been adopted. As to property tax relief, ninety-five bills are being considered on property tax relief in this session. I have to say, I'm not up to speed on them all. There has been one that has been passed in the House, and that is one that allows jurisdictions to provide a property tax credit to persons who are at least seventy years of age or older. I think there's an income limitation on that. There's some other bills that look of interest, including one that freezes the assessment for elderly homeowners, and one that gives credits for structures using qualifying energy conservation devices for electricity generation. There's already some credits for certain environmental things within a structure, but this expands the possibilities on this. There's still some hearings on these coming up, but I do have to say that I think there's a pretty strong feeling among the various legislators that something needs to be done, and I anticipate that several more of these will pass. I don't necessarily have direction as to one that's better than the other for us to endorse or work on that.
I guess from past work that I've done, I'm not, I mean, certainly providing tax breaks to elderly homeowners is not a bad thing, but it's really not broad enough, because some of the families who are affected by increasing property values are not elderly, but they are low-income and could benefit from...
There are several bills that allow municipalities to have a little bit more flexibility on how they deal with... flexibility on how they deal with property taxes.
Which would clearly be our preference.
Right. One of the hot topics, I actually didn't stay for one hearing on, on the annexation proposal, the non-annexation proposal that the Maryland Association of Counties has put forward this year. It was a packed house. Many municipalities had officials there testifying, opposing the, the bill that Mako is putting forth that would strictly limit the possibility of annexation by municipalities. And I don't, I actually don't think it's going to pass, but it was, quite a lot of people came out to speak on that item.
I actually was doing laundry one night and channel surfing and discovered a...
Oh, it went on forever.
I discovered this whole hearing on one of the cable channels, and it looked to me like the outcome of the hearing was that the legislature was going to send it back to something that was the equivalent of summer study again.
Yeah.
In other words, it didn't look like it was, it was going to go by, but it also looked like what was going to happen is there can be some more discussion about this.
Well, it had been in discussion, and then it kind of popped up as a bill, as opposed to completing the discussion, and it caused some hurt feelings. The subject of eminent domain is hot, is hot. We have 45 bills on that this year. The, we have responded on several about our concern about the fiscal impact on Tacoma Park of several of them. But there are very many of these bills, and I have not read all the details of each one. And one of the things that I do need to find out about is which one might have legs, because when you have 45 bills, there's only a couple that are really being seriously considered, and I need to find out which ones those are, and I don't know. There was a question about the bill that was put forward by, by Kensington, the local government's street lighting equipment bill. And this authorizes the local government to purchase street lighting equipment from an electric company. It requires the local government to pay fair market value for that equipment, and it allows them to not have to deal with some of the high voltage line laws. This bill has been passed by the Senate. I'm not sure where it stands in the House, but it looks like it's going to move forward as a, as a bill, as an approved bill. So this basically allows the municipality to purchase streetlights and operate them and, and to maintain them, which sometimes, working with Pepco and others, it can take an awfully long time to get those, those street, that streetlighting equipment.
And actually, the, the individual in Kensington who initially contacted us about this felt it could also save municipalities some money, although, you know, it's going to, I think it would sort of depend on what other kinds of things were attached to it. I don't know what the, what the House schedule is, but it occurs to me that this might be something that we might be able to help along if we were to take a, a formal stand.
Yeah, I, there wasn't, there didn't seem to be a hearing scheduled on it at this time.
But I think, I mean, if the council would be amenable to taking it up, we could, we could certainly collect what information there is on it and maybe take a look at that.
Right. The final item I have on the list is local government funding. As we spoke earlier this evening, the program open space funds have increased, and there's not the kind of deep concern about some of the other local funding pots that there's been in past years. We received a letter from the head of transportation, I'm blanking out his name.
Flanagan?
Who, I'm sorry?
Secretary Flanagan?
Yeah, Flanagan, who was objecting to the concept that somehow people raided the highway user fund lines. I think that's one interpretation is that they have, but they were objecting to that characterization and that it was, you know, others taking from pots. Nevertheless, it has meant that we've had less money in the past, and until, until people kind of get out of the session and from behind the closed doors, we will not really know where we stand.
Secretary Flanagan also objected to it when the same issue was brought up when the mayors were before the committee, and I have to say, it didn't appear that he had convinced many mayors. I mean, I don't think that people particularly cared whose fault it was, they just wanted the money.
Well, and that's been certainly our issue with Carroll Avenue funding and, and New Hampshire Avenue funding. You know, that, that money should have been there. It was allocated, at least it was identified, and it should have gone through, and, and people were using it for other purposes. So I think those are the, the major topics. We've got the next about two weeks of more hearings, and after that, it's the final stuff where the, the full House and Senate make the final decisions on the bills, and, and the session ends in mid-April.
Is there any, any questions from the council? Any other things?
I, I would, I'm going to try and schedule a resolution on the streetlight bills, or anything else that we should pursue following that one?
I, I strongly urge you to do some contacting of the legislators.
Yes, that's always very important. And, and I have to say, we, we had an opportunity on Saturday, generally when you go up before these committees on your, on your various funding requests, you have legislators who are there, and both Senator Rubin and Delegate Francho are both very well positioned in terms of funding requests. And I had an opportunity to talk to both of them very briefly, and they are both extremely supportive of the kinds of, of funding requests that we had put in and other people have been put in. And so I, legislators really do listen, and I think they do try and respond to requests that they get.
Especially, especially, it does make a tremendous difference.
Well, even, even if you're sending them emails, I mean, they, they do try and keep on top of what people want, and to some extent, they take their cue from what they hear from their constituencies. So it's certainly, speaking to my colleagues, all of whom I know contact their legislations, but also people out there, it does really make a difference when you contact your legislators. They do try and keep on top of those things. Anything else?
Thank you.
Nothing else, we're adjourned.